Good evening. There being a quorum present, which means at least 35 of us, and having been advised by the town clerk that the warrant has been properly served, this annual town meeting of the town of Plimpton is now open. Barry DiChristofano, your moderator, 198 Main Street. Thank you for coming tonight. As we've done the last two years, we have these two rooms. You're free to sit in either room. We're not requiring masks this time, but certainly if you feel more comfortable with one, please wear one. And, you know, prior, just the other day, I was told that the transmission rate in Plymouth County has gone up a bit, so it's really not an issue. You want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you feel a little more comfortable having more space around you in the other room, please go there. They might be a little lonely in that other room. Before we go further, there'll be a couple of comments from our fire captain, Sheersted, about exits and safety. There he is.
Good evening. In the interest of public safety, we would like to remind all attendees to take a moment and locate the two exits that are closest to where you're sitting. In this room, it's the doors on the left and right of me, and the doors on the left and right behind me. In the other room, same thing. If you look to your right, it's those two doors there. If you look to your left, same thing. The doors will lead outside. In the event of a fire alarm, please exit in a calm and orderly fashion through the closest, safest exit. Keep in mind, the closest exit may not be through the way you entered the room. Thank you for taking a moment to keep yourself and others safe.
Thanks, John. Okay. And I'll, at the end of the night, I'll repeat this again. After the town meeting's over, please leave the building by the closest exit to you, and don't mill about inside or in the corridors or anything like that. And be aware that as comfortable as any of you might be, either without masks or being close to somebody else, others might not be comfortable, so please be aware of that and be considerate. At this moment, I would ask everyone to please rise and observe a moment of silence for those Plimpton neighbors of ours who have passed away since our last meeting. Thank you, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. The flag's off to your right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'd like to thank Dennehy Principal, Peter Veneto, and all the custodial staff for setting up the room tonight, and everyone pitched in with their efforts. Tonight, we'll be holding both our annual town meeting and a special town meeting. The annual town meeting addresses the coming fiscal year, 2023. That starts July 1st. Then, 8:00 or a little bit after, we'll recess the annual town meeting temporarily to begin a special town meeting that addresses funding issues in this current fiscal year's spending, the year that ends June 30th. You should all have received a mailed copy of the town warrant, or picked one up when you checked in, and hopefully you've had a chance to review it. Tonight's meeting is being taped for broadcast by Area 58 Community Media Access. Please take a moment and silence your cell phones. Take them out and check them, please. Don't say, "Oh yeah, I remember I did that when I left the house." Thank you. Tonight, you have on your right the Board of Selectmen, John Traynor, Chairperson Christine Joy, Mark Russo, our Town Administrator, Liz Dennehy, Town Council, Greg Corbo, and our Town Clerk, Patricia Dederman. On your left, starting closest to me, the Finance Committee, Nate Sides, Chairman, Catherine Shepherd, Marilyn Brown, Stephen Lewis, Michael Lemieux, and at the far end, our Town Accountant, Lisa Hart. You were checked in by our tellers for the meeting, Nancy Magnuson and Patricia Mustacaris. Tonight, in each room, if a standing vote count is needed, the counters will be Nancy Butler, Jackie Freitas, Jean Cohen, and Colleen Thompson. Our peace officers tonight are Officer Nate Cristofori, Kevin Brower, and our new police chief, Matt All. Several of our officials are not residents of the town, and so they need your permission to address the assembly. I will entertain a motion that will allow the following individuals to participate tonight when and if appropriate. Town Administrator, Elizabeth Dennehy, Town Council, Greg Corbo, Town Treasurer/Collector, Christine Kelly, Police Chief, Matthew All, Assistant Assessor, Wendy Jones, Library Director, Michael Lawson, the Dennehy Principal, Peter Veneto, and from Silver Lake Regional School District, our Superintendent, Jill Prue, and Director of Business Services, Christine Healy. Will anyone motion?
Second.
And second?
Second.
All in favor of letting that list of out-of-town speakers speak? If we require it, please raise your right hand. Downhands? All those opposed, raise your right hand. Unanimous in this room?
Unanimous here.
Unanimous vote. Are there any people in the audience other than those who are not registered voters of Plimpton? Okay, you're good. You're good. Ma'am, you need to be in one of these front rows. For what? For now, you're not a registered voter at the start of town meeting. You need to sit up front, please. Sorry. Keeps everybody on the same footing.
Mary's Joan in the back too.
I'm sorry?
No, over at the side.
Is someone else in the back who's not a resident? You need to sit up front. Thank you. So I welcome you to town meeting. If you wish, if you're not one of the town residents and you wish to speak to an issue, raise your hand, and I can see if the feeling of the town meeting is that they want you to speak, but it's up to town meeting. Anyone wishing to speak needs to stand at one of the microphones. There's three in this room, there's one in the other room. If you're waiting, if someone's speaking at a microphone and you want to speak, stand behind them, a safe distance, and no more than one person waiting in line behind a speaker. After being recognized by me, state your name and your full street address before you begin your comments and questions. So this is to help us all get to know one another better, and also, if there should be something on a warrant that deals with a particular part of town, if we know that you live near there, well, you, we might hear you differently in what you say, because you have some firsthand knowledge of that, as opposed to just being an interested resident. So please give your name and your street address and the first time you come up. If you come up again later, towards the end of the night, I might ask you to say it again, just so we all get to know one another. Please direct all comments through me, the moderator. I'll direct your comments to the appropriate person. There will be no side discussions directly between a town meeting member and someone Article sponsors will be allowed up to three minutes for a presentation. Speakers from the floor will be allowed up to three minutes, and I timed this just to keep us all on pace. All our time is valuable to all of us. Anyone wishing to speak a second time on the same article will need to wait until everyone that wants to speak gets a chance to do so. And you must be bringing something new to the discussion, not just rehashing something that was said before, or just because you want to get the last word in. It's got to be something new if you want to speak more than once to an article. If proposing any amendments, substantial amendments to the articles, they'll need to be in writing. And finally, it's a small town. We come here as neighbors. Once we get to know each other as neighbors, we wind up being friends. Let's remember that and leave here tonight that same way, and keep our discussions focused on the issues at hand, and keep them from being personal. With civility and respect for everybody, we can maintain our strong community. Onto Article 1. Article 1. To hear the reports of the town officers and act thereon, and to receive and act upon reports of any committees, and give authority or instructions, or take any action relative Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been moved in second. Are there any town officers or committees who would like to give a report tonight at town meeting?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, I was distracted. What were you asking?
No one back there wants to give a report, right?
No reports here.
Okay. I guess I should have, before I asked that, I should have said, "All in favor of hearing reports, raise your right hand." Sorry, I'm out of practice. Downhands? All opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article 2. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements for FY 2023 as permitted by, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator? John Traynor, 62 Crescent Street. I'll be moving the articles for the treasurer, since she's not a resident.
Okay.
I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
John Duffy, 392 Main Street. I guess I'd just like some, you know, just a brief clarification of what this article does and what the reason is for it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Traynor, you want to answer that?
I would ask the treasurer, since she's been approved.
Lisa?
Christine. Yes, this article is to...
Wait, excuse me a second.
Oh.
So I should say, this is our town treasurer.
Christine Kelly, town treasurer. This is a basic agreement that keeps a certain amount of money in our accounts every year, just a certain balance.
Does that answer your question? Okay. It's what, if you saw that video that was on Area 58 cable, where I kind of explained some of this, that's one of these things I call a housekeeping article, that we always have to do every year to keep running. Any other discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 2 as written, please raise your right hand. Downhand? Opposed? Unanimous in here?
Unanimous.
Article 3. To see if the town will vote to amend the Wage and Personnel Classification Plan effective July 1, 2022, and to pay his wages to following sums, or take any action relative thereto. I'm not going to read all of the numbers, but I will go through the groups, and if somebody wants to put a hold on any one of these lines, just call out "hold." In Fire Department, firefighter/paramedic category, full-time lieutenant, firefighter/paramedic. Full-time firefighter/paramedic. Part-time firefighter/paramedic. Under the paramedic category, full-time captain/paramedic. Part-time captain/paramedic. Lieutenant/paramedic. Paramedic call. Under EMTs, full-time captain/EMT. Part-time captain/EMT. Firefighter/EMT. EMT call. Under firefighters, firefighter. Under Highway Department, highway superintendent. Working foreman. Motor equipment repairman. Equipment operator. Truck driver/labourer. Under clerical election workers, senior clerk/warden. Constable. Under elder affairs, director elder affairs. Senior aide. Under library, library director. Senior library technician. Circulation assistant. Under police other, special police officer, police matron. Under professional, land use coordinator, assistant assessor, administrative assessor, health agent, conservation agent. Under town hall support, assistant town clerk, I'm sorry, assistant town accountant, assistant town clerk, assistant treasurer/collector, administrative assistant, senior clerk, clerk. Under town labor, senior disposal attendant. Disposal attendant. Town custodian. Laborer. Under veteran affairs, veterans agent stipend. Hearing no holds on any of those items?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
We have a general question before you call for a vote, please.
Okay, go right ahead.
Susan Vetterline, 192 Main Street.
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Susan Vetterline, 192 Main Street. I'd like to ask for an explanation of the process, processes for job performance evaluations. We have quite a variety of employees. I would just like to know what the process is for job performance evaluations.
Okay, thank you. Does somebody from Wage and Personnel Board care to address that? I would hope.
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Chairman.
Can you speak up a little, Alan?
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Wage and Personnel Chairman. I would answer that by saying that over, I've been on Wage and Personnel for probably, I mean, Barry got me on it like 20 years ago, but I would say that the evaluation process, the job descriptions, the merit increases, all of that has been steadily improving and becoming more professional since I've been on Wage and Personnel.
Susan, does that answer your question?
Not really, but...
I'm sorry, Susan?
That doesn't really answer my question. I guess more specifically, I'd like to know, for instance, in the, in the town hall, who gives the performance evaluations for the various departments? Are there differences among how personnel are evaluated?
Are there personnel evaluations done on our employees?
The Wage and Personnel Board is not in active data name management of town employees.
Okay. Who does?
Mr. Moderator? I'm happy to take that question. Over the last few years, we've been working with the Wage and Personnel Board to come up with a formal evaluation process. It's an imperfect process. We started out with a form that was somewhat general to cover all of the employees under the bylaw. So like I said, it's not totally perfect. Some job duties are vastly different from other job duties in different departments. Annually, if somebody is being submitted for a merit increase, typically, the department head will evaluate their performance. They set various goals and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year, and then, generally speaking, I review that with the department head, and then we put that in as part of the budget preparation process. And then that department head goes through the Finance Committee and advocates for their employee or employees for a merit raise. So I hope that that answers your question.
Thank you, Ms. Dennehy. Susan, is that work for you?
That's very good. Does this apply to both people, to people who are both elected as well as people who are hired?
It only applies to the people that are on this Article 3 listing.
All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Sorry. I don't know if this will come down far enough. Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street. Why are we amending it?
We're amending it because if you look at the numbers, each year, usually, there's a little bit of a increase, a percent or two.
Right.
And that's the amendment. That's what's being amended, are the rates.
But we had already voted for it last year?
We voted last year's rates. This is for the coming year, that starts in July.
Okay, I'll try to find my brain. Thank you.
Sure.
John Duffy, 392 Main Street. So I was looking at the lowest sal, rates, like, for the clerk, and it says it's like 14, 18. What is the Massachusetts minimum wage? Because I think it's actually slightly more than that. So I'm concerned that, like, we shouldn't pass this if that's not correct. Can anyone check that? I just, I don't know.
Yes, you can answer that.
Municipalities are exempt from Massachusetts' minimum wage.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no hands. All those in favor of passing Article 3 as worded, please raise your right hand.
Barry, you want to make a motion?
Yes. I'm sorry?
Wasn't I supposed to make a motion?
I thought you already hadn't moved it.
No?
Sorry. Go right ahead. Keep me honest.
Thank you. Very nice suit, though. Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Wage and Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second? Motion's been moved in second, and we've already had the discussion on it. So all in favor of Article 3 as printed, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Majority vote?
Majority.
It's a majority. And the time is 7:24. I think it usually takes us at least, if not a little bit more than a half hour, to go through the budget on Article 4. So what we're going to do, because since we have the special starting at 8, we're going to bypass Article 4 for the moment. We're going to move on to Article 5, and then, at 8:00, when we, we'll take however many motions, 5, 6, maybe even 7, we can do it before 8:00. Then we'll stop at 8:00 for the special. After the special, when we come back, we'll pick up with Article 4, the omnibus budget, and then we'll go on from there with where we left off. So we're going to move on to Article 5 now. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to amend its Wage and Personnel bylaw by voting to delete the current Wage and Personnel bylaws in their entirety, and replacing them with the draft dated July 1, 2022, entitled Wage and Personnel Bylaw, a copy of which is on file and available for viewing in the town clerk's office, and further, to authorize the town administrator to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the bylaws as necessary, or to take any other action relative thereto. And I believe there are also copies of this new bylaw wording available when you checked in today. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Wage and Personnel Board. I move that the town vote to approve and amend the Wage and Personnel bylaw as shown in the handout, and to authorize the town administrator to make any non-substantive ministerial changes to numbering and formatting so as to ensure consistency with the rest of the bylaws as necessary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been moved in seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing no hands. Article 5's been moved in seconded. All those in favor of Article 5 as printed in the warrant, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? It's a majority.
Unanimous.
Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $37,000 to conduct financial audits for fiscal year 2023, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator? John Traynor, 62 Crescent Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $37,000 to conduct financial auditors, audits for fiscal year 2023.
Second?
Second.
Motion to main in seconded to do Article 6, and this $37,000 will be coming, instead of just saying from free, available funds, it's been specified as coming from free cash. It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 6 as printed, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Unanimous in here? Article 7. Gee, if I knew it could be this fast, maybe we could have got done the budget. Article 7. To see if the town will vote to accept and expend such sums of money allotted, or to be allotted, to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2023, and borrow in anticipation of reimbursement such sums as may be available as the state's share of the cost of work, said Chapter 90, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion for Article 7?
Yep. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Rob Furlotte, 93 Maple Street, the Highway Superintendent. I move that the town vote to accept and expend the sum of $165,761 allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for the fiscal year 2023, and borrow in anticipation of reimbursement such sums as may be available as the state's share of the cost of work, said Chapter 90.
Second. The article's been moved in seconded, and the, instead of such sums, it's been specified as being $165,761. Seeing no hands. All those in favor of Article 7, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
And just moving forward, so I'm going to read the full article. If you, if you come to make the motion for it, you can motion for the article, and in this case, if you're specifying the sum, you can just specify the sum. You don't need to reread the entire motion. Is that correct? Town Council? Yeah. There's no need to reread the entire thing that I just read. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $200,000 for road construction, resurfacing, and top coating, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto. And I want to point out that this, since it's coming from Capital Stabilization Fund, it's going to require a 2/3 vote, not just a simple majority. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Yep. It's been, it's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Article 8's been moved in seconded. Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 8, please raise your right hand. Downhands? Unanimous? Article 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Highway Department... To see if the town will vote to authorize the Highway Department to enter into a lease-purchase agreement in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of four years for the lease and purchase to fully equip a 2022 Ford F-550 or similar vehicle and to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $27,417.25 to cover the first-year payment of such an agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Make motion.
I have a, it's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Moderator?
Excuse me?
That one needs a funding source.
I'm sorry?
This one's going to need a funding source.
Yes, we need a funding source.
Capital stabilization.
Okay. So our highway surveyor who made the motion is specifying that the source of this, the funding source, is Capital Stabilization Fund. And as it's coming from one of the two stabilization funds in town, it will require a two-thirds vote. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article IX, please raise your right hand. Somebody jumping the gun, yep. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous? Oh, no, I'm sorry. You raised your hand opposed? Okay, unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article X. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to the sum of $105,327.58 to make annual lease payments as part of lease purchase programs previously authorized as shown below or take any other action relative thereto. And this is for four separate lease payments. A townwide fiber optic build-out equipment, $22,000. Highway department truck, $17,730. Fire department vehicles, $48,903.5. Fire department command vehicle, $16,724.23. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Mark Russo, 140 Palmer Road. So moved.
Second.
We'll need a funding source again.
Yeah, we're going to need a funding source for this one.
So moved from free cash.
Okay, so the motion is, the second on the motion is to, I'm sorry, the motion was to transfer this sum from free cash and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article X, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you all for bearing with the process by which we have to run town government. I know this gets a little bit dry, but it's how it has to happen. The final say in everything we spend is all up to the people in these two rooms. Article XI. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $13,600 for the purchase and installation of four solar-powered pole-mounted speed-limit signs and anything incidental or related thereto or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so moved from free cash.
Second.
Okay, the article has been moved with the funding source free cash and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no hands for discussion. All in favor of Article XI, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous?
No. This moderator.
I'm sorry?
There was no.
Majority, not unanimous, majority.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Lisa. Article XII. To see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from the community preservation estimated annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. The appropriations are as follows. From the FY 2023, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $5,000. Reserves. From estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $10,000. For community housing reserve, $10,000. For open space reserve, $10,000. And for budgeted reserve, $65,000. Or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Russo, Chair, Community Preservation Committee. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article XII's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article XII, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority?
Majority.
Article XIII. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of the fiscal year 2023 real and personal property interim valuation of the town or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Speaker, Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street, Chairman of the Plimpton Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of fiscal year 2023 real and personal property interim valuation of the town.
Second.
Article XIII's been moved and seconded and the funding source has been specified as free cash. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Jack Doyle, 193 Main Street. Could you please explain to some of us dummies the difference between free cash and raise and appropriate? I know that means tax.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want me to do that or do you want to do that? Okay, our town accountant will do that for us.
So free cash is essentially the money that was raised and appropriated last year that we didn't end up spending for one reason or another. Either you put so much into a budget and they didn't spend it all or we collected more in property taxes than we expected to. That money goes through by doing a balance sheet. It goes to the state. The state will approve the balance sheet and they'll certify how much free cash we have left from this year that can be used in next year. Or could be used in this year in the special town meeting if we needed to. Raise and appropriate is the money that's raised with taxes, mainly property taxes.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Doyle? Any other discussion? Yes.
Hi, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. Since we're asking questions about definitions, I'd just like a quick explanation what the difference is between real and personal property since that also comes up in Article XV.
Article XIII?
Fifteen, so we're on, it also discussed, sorry.
Someone from the assessors?
Yes, I can answer that. The difference between Article XIII and XV deals with two types of evaluations. There's the annual valuation, which we do every year. And that's being, that data is based on the sales for the, each year and it's valued by PK Valuation Group. The Article XV, obviously I get to speak this again, but just to distinguish the two, is for a recollection purposes, for a different purpose. That is because we are required to collect data for reevaluation purposes every 10 years and that is a more substantial evaluation process. So we collect money each year to contribute to the cost of that. So there are two types of evaluations which the Board of Assessors must accomplish. And it's, one is annually and one is, it looks like every 10, it used to be seven years, now it's every 10 years. So that's the reason why we have two articles because the money's being used for similar but different purposes.
Correct with, does that answer your question? Or is your question about what's the difference between real and personal property? Does that, if what he said answers your question, okay. Please come up to the microphone.
Yes, so that was, that didn't actually answer my question, but it was, you know, enlightening in another way. I guess it answered kind of like any additional thoughts I had about, but, yeah. So it partially answered my question, but not the original question.
The original question is what's the difference between real and personal property? Was that correct?
Yes.
I thought I could answer that. So real property is based on real estate. And we have several types. We have residential, we have commercial. Those are the two, those are the two main ones that we evaluate. And I think there's open space, a third. And that's two parts of what we, what we in the Assessors' Office evaluate. The other is personal property. Well, that means that's generally business personal property. For example, Cisco has business personal property that we assess and we tax. And that is an substantial portion of the budget, though it's not quite as big as real estate. So it's generally considered personal property. So it's considered business personal property. Theoretically, if people have second homes and they're not residents of the town Plimpton, they're taxed. So essentially, you know, things like the gas station, you know, its pumps might be taxed under personal property and that sort of thing. But the, but we handle both in Article XIII, although they are in separate, they are in separate lines on the, on the sheet, on the sheets. We do handle both of them. But they are valuation essentially versus, real estate versus business equipment. It's probably the best way to easily distinguish between real and personal property.
Thank you. Does that answer your question now? Okay. Any other discussion on Article XIII? Seeing no hands. Oh, one more. Yes, sir.
Bobby Durbin, I live at 113 Prospect.
Okay.
It's just a question on the free cash comment that the, I forget the woman's title.
It's to our accountant.
To the accountant. Is there a cap? When you have to report that to the state, is there a cap limit to which at some point you'd have to credit back to the residents of the town? Or you'd cease raising the tax?
No, there's not a limit where it would have to be returned to the town. However, there is an option to use free cash to lower the tax rate. So you could actually apply it, which is kind of what we're doing by applying all these articles to free cash. Instead of taxing you for them, we're applying it to these articles instead of raising and appropriating funds for them. There's not a cap. However, there is, you could do a specific article to just use free cash money to reduce the tax rate.
Right now for the town, is there a specific limit when that hits that they would take that into consideration? And if so, is, could you tell us what that amount would be?
Yeah, I don't know. There is not a policy set. We actually, one of my goals this year is to get some financial policy set and free cash would be one that we would be addressing. Just for your record, we had about $287,000 in free cash this year. It really isn't a lot. It really wouldn't make much of a difference on, directly on anyone's property tax this year.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, good questions. Anything else? Okay, I guess we're ready to vote on Article XIII. All in favor of Article XIII, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Unanimous.
Article XIV. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of GIS map subscription hosted by Applied Graphics Inc. or other similar service and to update the Assessors' Maps GIS annually or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Speaker, Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street, Plimpton Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of GIS map subscription hosted by Applied Geographics Incorporated or other similar service and to update the Assessors' Maps GIS annually.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded and the source of this is again free cash. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article XIV, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Unanimous.
Article XV. Oh, and I should say, just so that nobody gets worried up in Beacon Hill. I'm not the speaker, I'm just the moderator. I don't want anybody coming down on me. Article XV. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $8,000 for the property, for the purpose of real property data recollection or any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 for the purpose of real property data recollection.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. To take this $8,000 as written in the article from free cash. Any discussion? Seeing none, no hands. All in favor of Article XV, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Unanimous.
See how we're doing here, okay? Excuse me just a moment. Article XVI. To see if the town will vote to designate the Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively as the "authorized officer," end quote, to negotiate payment in lieu of tax agreements for solar or wind-powered energy systems and co-located energy storage systems pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, and after approval by town meeting of any respective solar pilot agreement that has been so negotiated, to execute on behalf of the town the said solar pilot agreement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, 85 West Street, Plimpton Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Article XVI has been moved as printed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please step to a microphone, may I? Any closest, I can use that one if you want.
Hi, Deborah Anderson, Elm Street, 49. For years, we've been hearing about pilot programs, payment in lieu of taxes. Can somebody explain what that actually is?
Okay, thank you. You want to take that one, Ms. Stiles?
Yes, I can explain it. So the, this goes, now, we are dealing with solar panels here. And recently, in the past, things have been somewhat confused. But the, since the current, the climate change bill was passed on June 24, 2021, municipalities have the, they have the option to enter into what's called a payment in lieu of tax agreement with solar companies who wish to put panels in the town for commercial purposes. The idea is that if you put a solar farm, you can either be taxed on that, it's commercial personal property, and be assessed and go, and you can either pay your tax or move to abate it, or you can come to an agreement with the town to enter what's called a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of tax agreement, where the idea is that the town and the solar entity agree on what the rate is going to be going forward for a particular period of time, typically 20 years. And that way, that the town has the benefit of steady income and the solar facility knows what they're going to pay each, what they're going to pay here. So there's benefits to both sides. Now, there's no requirement that we enter into these things. But that is, but as of the, as of 2021, if we do, we need to designate who in town is going to be responsible for approving these pilot agreements, who's going to be in charge of negotiating them. And such we indicate here, the people who are going to be that, the selectmen, the assessors, and the town administrator, who is going to negotiate with the solar companies to try and get the best rates for the town. So that's what the purpose of this article is. And that's why we have pilot agreements now, that they've been affected by this new statute. Whereas before, prior to 2021, the issues were uncertain whether a municipality could tax solar arrays because of various, the various language of the law at that time. But now it's quite clear that we can. But now, it's quite clear that we can, and while we do not have to enter into pilot agreements, oftentimes, they are beneficial for both town and entity, and so, but in order to do that, we do need to designate who's going to be authorized to, to negotiate those agreements.
Thank you, Ethan. Does that answer your question, Deb? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 16, please raise your right hand. Downhand, opposed? Majority.
Unanimous.
Article 17. To see if the town will vote to approve the solar pilot agreement with Plimpton Main Street Solar LLC, 718 West Business Highway 60, PO Box 639 Dexter, Missouri 63841, for a solar facility located on Plimpton Assessors Map 17 as Lot 5-8 and Lot 5-11 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45th, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, and to authorize Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively as the authorized officer to execute said solar pilot agreement on behalf of the town or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
We have Article 17's been moved as printed and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr.
Oh, go ahead.
So, this, this warrant, there are two warrant articles, this one and the next one. They were, they are for agreements, and we're doing this separately because they were before the, before the climate change bill, as I recall. So, we need to do these things separately here. But anyway, this, this is for a pilot agreement, and the term is 20 years, and it's a 6.3-megawatt solar array on 18 acres of land. And the annual payments to this town start at $103,768 on year one and increase to $165,889 on year 20.
Thank you. Did you have a question? Go ahead. Ethan?
Elise Lyons, 213 Main Street. It gives me the lot numbers, but can you tell me exactly where that is, please?
Can someone from the Board of Assessors or someone else tell us where those lots are?
Anne Sobuleski, 255 Main Street Planning Board. These are the solar fields that are on the bog, that they're putting the fence up in front of along Main Street, and they're also in the cleared area as it abuts Mayflower, on the hard-use bogs.
So, they're not, they're not town-owned. They're not going to be town-owned, but the town is going to get benefit from them?
Yeah, the, these are on the hard-use bogs. They're private solar fields. This one and the next one. The next one is on their bogs on Lake Street.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Jason from 268 Main Street in Plimpton.
Jason, what's your last name, Jason, please?
Jason Lewis.
Thank you.
I see the solar panels going in. I mean, doesn't Main Street look bad enough as it is with the telephone, the, the tele-tower going up, and we're going to throw more solar panels, but it already looks bad enough.
So, I don't think that was really a, a comment about this, whether or not we should approve the pilot since the solar field is already built, but anyone else have something to speak to the article about? Now, all in favor of Article 17, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Majority.
Okay, it being, no, we can do this one. Article 18, of course, it's identical to the other one, just a different place. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to approve the solar pilot agreement with Plimpton Lake Street Solar LLC, 718 West Business Highway 60, PO Box 639 Dexter, Missouri 63841, for a solar facility located on Plimpton Assessors Map 3 as Lot 2-8 and Lot 2-13 pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45th, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, and to authorize Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen, the Town of Plimpton Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator of the Town of Plimpton collectively as the authorized officer to execute said solar pilot agreement on behalf of the town or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on Article 18. It's similar to what we did on 17, a different location. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Majority.
Okay, what we're going to do is take a five-minute recess here, and when we come back, a couple minutes after eight. Actually, what I'm going to ask for is a motion to recess our annual town meeting for five minutes, and when we come back, we're going to go into the special town meeting. And the motion would be to recess the annual town meeting now and come back to annual town meeting after the special town meeting has been finished. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody not understand what we're doing? All in favor of, please raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous. See you in about five minutes, folks. Good jobs. Okay, we're convening now for the Plimpton Special Town Meeting. And as I said before, this deals with things that are going on in this current fiscal year. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $7,850 to be added to the Highway Barn Roof Replacement Article as voted pursuant to Article 23 at the June 17, 2020 Annual Town Meeting to complete necessary structural strapping and associated work at the Highway Barn, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Trainor, Crescent Street, 62 Crescent. Nice. So moved.
Can you speak more into your mic, please?
John Trainor, Crescent Street. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
We need a funding source stated.
Does the mover want to give a funding source?
It's from the group insurance.
Should be group insurance.
So, this is going to be coming from last year's town meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 1 of the Special Town Meeting, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article 2. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $40,000 to be added to the Town Buildings and Maintenance Emergency Article as voted pursuant to Article 4 at the June 17, 2020 Special Town Meeting, or take any, excuse me, take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move as printed with the transfer from free cash.
Second?
Second.
The article's been moved and seconded, and the source of this funding is free cash. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 2, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article 3. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $11,500 to the County Pension Line, which is Budget Line 15 in the FY 2022 budget, as voted pursuant to Article 4 at the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, for a required unanticipated payment to Plymouth County Retirement or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 25 Medicare, the sum of $11,500 to the County Pension Line, Budget Line 15 in the FY 2022 budget, as voted pursuant to Article 4 at the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting for required unanticipated payment to Plymouth County Retirement.
Second.
Okay, the motion's, the article's been moved and seconded, and in the motion, the source for this is last year's Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 25 Medicare line. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 3, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article 4. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $4,464 to the Unemployment Line, which is Budget Line 30 in the FY 2022 budget, as voted pursuant to Article 4 at the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance, the sum of $14,724 to the Unemployment Line, Budget Line 30 in the FY 2022 budget as voted pursuant to Article 4 at the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Okay, so Article 4 has been moved and seconded, and the motion for Article 4 did two things. It specified the source of the funding, which is Budget Line 20 from last year, the Medicare line, and it changed the amount from $4,464 to $14,724. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Come up, please. Come up to the microphone. If you have a question, please. Up to the microphone, please.
Jack Doyle, 193 Main Street. Why's the difference?
Can someone explain the difference?
I can. Mr. Moderator, through you. The town received an unanticipated unemployment claim after the warrant had gone to print in the amount of $10,000 roughly, $10,000 and change.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Doyle? Yeah. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 4, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article 5. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Police Department to enter into a lease-purchase agreement in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), for a period of five years for the lease and purchase of 16 tasers to replace older tasers that are no longer supported with replacement parts or technology upgrades, and to transfer from available funds to sum of $10,528 to cover the first-year payment of such agreement that is due in fiscal year 2022, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Russo, 140 Palmer Road. So moved. The funding source will be the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance.
Second.
Okay, the Article 5 has been moved and seconded, and the motion includes the specification of the funding source as being Budget Line 20 from last year, Group Insurance. Any comments or discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 5, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Majority.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I'm sorry?
This is Town Council. This one requires a two-thirds.
Okay, could you explain to me where that is?
Uh, yes, so, under the General Laws, Chapter 40, was it 44, Section 21(c), in order to enter into a lease-purchase agreement, you need a two-thirds vote.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to do it again. I think I know in my head what it was. Please raise your hand if you support the article. Downhands, opposed? Two-thirds in here.
Two-thirds here.
Thank you. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $15,830 for the final payment for the copy machines located in the Treasurer, Tax Collector, Town Clerk, and Board of Health offices, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the May 12, 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance, the sum of $15,830 for the final payment for the copy machines located in the Treasurer, Tax Collector, Town Clerk, and Board of Health offices.
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. The motion specifies the funding source as being last year's Town Meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor?
Mr. Moderator.
Please just step up to the microphone. Yes.
Elise Lyons, 213 Main, Group Insurance.
Can everybody hear Elise in the back? Okay, thank you.
Group Insurance is getting a lot of money. Do we have, how much money is left in Group Insurance?
We do have enough to fund these articles. That's all been calculated. I would have to look up how much money, there's still, you know, May, the rest of May and June to come out of that line, but we calculated, the Treasurer and myself, how much we would be spending and how much would be left to cover these articles.
Okay, thank you.
And I can give you exact numbers, Elise, if you want. At some point, I can shoot, you know, let you know exactly how much was left in that line.
It's just that the, they weren't listed, so we're now saying what funds they're coming from, and I just want to make sure we have those funds available to be able to take those funds.
Right. The warrant gets printed before we, like, we wait till the last minute to see how much money we've spent in the lines before we try and come up with funding sources.
But that money in Group hasn't been transferred to free cash?
No. That, because free cash is from two years ago, really. It's not from the year we're right in now. It's from the previous year. Because this year, we haven't finished yet, so they couldn't tell us we have extra money yet.
Thank you for the education. Thank you.
Good answer. Any other comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article 6, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Majority.
Unanimous.
Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of $15,000 for hydrogeology services or other general consulting, land use, and/or engineering services in order to study the potential impacts of the North Carver redevelopment project, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, so moved. The funding source will be the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, Budget Line 20, Group Insurance.
Second.
Article 7 has been seconded, I mean, moved and seconded, and the motion includes the funding source as, again, being Budget Line 20 from last year's town meeting, Group Insurance. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Moderator, I might just mention that this is part of the town's continuing efforts to try to limit or mitigate the effects of the North Carver redevelopment project. This is the opportunity to hire consultants with expertise and give us a hand in trying to mitigate the effects.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Hi, Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street. Is there any way that we can make Carver pay for this? Seeing they're making our lives a mess.
That has been explored so far. We haven't had very much luck, but it is a continuing effort in that regard.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Richard Walsh, Ring Road, 24 Ring Road. It seems to me that Carver would have to have done this study. They would, they would necessarily do this study. So, why don't we just get a copy of their study?
We will be, there isn't even a plan yet. So, when the plan comes, as much of that information as possible, we will get. The reason for this additional money is to look through the lens of the impact on Plimpton rather than the impact on Carver. Carver's going to be mostly concerned about the impact in their town. We're concerned about the more distant effect in our towns.
Sure, but the, the study itself doesn't know the, the boundary lines of the town.
Sir, please address your questions through me. Yeah, thank you.
The study doesn't stop at a line in the marsh or the field or the forest. The study includes an area.
Any information that we can get from Carver, we'll certainly want that, and we will want to use that. I think we'll, in addition, have specific questions for more distant effect in, into the town of Plumpton that Carver might not be interested in being concerned about.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, Anne Sobleski, two fifty-five Main Street. I've been following along what's been going on in Carver, and they have done a number of studies, and all of them have been designed, intended, and implemented to advance their project without much concern about what's going on and what's gonna happen in our town. Their goal is to get it built, to minimize whatever happens to us by not looking at it as much. So with our attempt to study it, we can really see what its effects are gonna be on us and maybe use that as a lobbying tool. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no hands, all in favor of Article Seven, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand dollars to the OPEB account, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one annual town meeting budget line twenty group insurance, the sum of ten thousand dollars to the OPEB account.
Second.
The motion, Article Eight has been moved and seconded, and the motion includes the funding source again coming from budget line twenty from last year, group insurance. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Doyle.
Jack Doyle, one ninety-three Main Street. What is OPEB?
Mr. Moderator, through you. OPEB is other post-employee benefits, and these are the medical benefits that the town is responsible for, retirees. So we squirrel money away to pay for it so that it's like a, kind of a savings account for that. I didn't hear what he said.
It's just a, a comment, that's, you didn't need to hear it. He's my neighbor, I can say that. Anyone else? All in favor of Article Eight, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority.
Unanimous.
Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to make the following line item transfers in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget, as voted pursuant to Article Four at the May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto. And there are five separate lines here, and I'm going to read the from and to and the amount, and you can read the rest. So they're all coming, the first four all come from line seven oh five, special education. Three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents is proposed to transfer to the special needs reserve fund. Thirteen thousand is proposed to be transferred to line seven hundred elementary school costs. Thirty-eight thousand is also proposed to be transferred to line seven hundred elementary school costs. And forty thousand dollars is being proposed to be transferred to line seven hundred elementary school costs. And the fifth one line comes from line ten, vocational education. Twenty-seven thousand dollars proposed to go to line seven hundred elementary school costs, and these are each for five different purposes. Do we have a motion?
John Wilhamsen, two fifty-five Main Street, and Chair of the Plumpton School Committee. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to make the line item transfers as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article Nine has been moved and seconded. Any discussion, or do you wanna say anything about it, John?
Yeah, just briefly, this is, we're moving money around in order to be able to, one, fund the special needs reserve fund, which is a savings account for us for special education, unexpected special education costs, and the rest are to conduct capital improvements for the school building, all from funds that were already appropriated last year at town meeting.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments on this? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article Nine, please raise your right hand. Downhand, I mean, downhands opposed. Thank you. Majority. Okay, do I hear a motion to end our special town meeting for the year?
So moved.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to end and dissolve our special town meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand. Downhand, opposed. Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Okay, we're going to move now back to our annual town meeting. End, we're going to go back to Article Four that we skipped over, and let me pull that back up here and get my act together. I know it's here, Article Four. Article Four, to see if the town will fix the compensation of elected officers and to see what sums of money the town will raise and appropriate, including appropriations from available funds, or, or borrow to defray charges and expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, Article Four has been moved and seconded, so this is the big town budget, and it has about, I don't know, a hundred lines or so. And so the way we will do this, we're gonna take it a section at a time. So for instance, we'll start with the total insurance and pension group. I'll read the line item and the description, the amount the finance committee is recommending for funding, and if anyone has a question or a comment about that, you don't need to come up, just call out "hold." I'll make a note, and I'll continue reading through that section. When we get done reading those, anything that somebody had to put a hold on, we'll go back and discuss and clarify, and then when those, everything is satisfied, we will vote on that section as a whole. So the first group, total insurance and pension. Line ten, insurance premiums, one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Line fifteen, county pension, six hundred and ele, did I hear a hold? I got a hold on the first line. Line fifteen, county pen, second line is the hold. Okay, so wait till I finish reading the amount, please. That way, I'm gonna, otherwise, I'll get messed up. County pension was six hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven. Line twenty, group health, five hundred thousand. Line twenty-five, Medicare, one hundred and fifteen thousand. Line thirty, unemployment, one thousand. Okay, there was a hold on line fifteen, county pensions. Please come to the microphone and ask your question or comment.
Hi, John Duffy, three ninety-two Main Street. I'm just, I don't really have a, a problem, I'm just, I'm just curious about the, the numbers, that consistent? I don't have time, like, I wasn't able to do the math in my head, like, if it's like a consistent increase each year, or how it works, I'm just curious.
Thank you. Does anyone wanna address how the county pension numbers arrived at every year? I want to discuss.
I can attempt to take that one.
Thank you.
Each year, we receive an assessment from Plymouth County Retirement Board. It comes in the form of a letter addressed to the Board of Selectmen and the Treasurer of the town, and that is the exact dollar amount that we owe them. Generally, we pay one half, effective July first, and then we have to pay the second half on or before January first of the next calendar year. So the total amount that we're being assessed for this upcoming fiscal year is the six hundred eleven, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars.
Okay. I just have a, a quick question, if I could, just about, so, because I, you know, raised this, do we wait until you're finished with the whole group before we say a hold?
If, if your question has been satisfactorily answered, then what we'll do is I'll ask for a vote on those first five lines, the total insurance and pension number. So are you good?
Yes.
Okay. So, total insurance and pension comes to one million three hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. All in favor, raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority. Section two, general government. Agricultural Commission, zero. Board of Appeals, eight hundred dollars. Conservation Commission, three thousand one hundred and fifty. Conservation Agent, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. Open Space, fifteen hundred. Council on Aging, six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight. Council on Agent Director Stipend, eighteen thousand five hundred and forty. Council on Aging Support Staff, forty-six thousand one hundred and seventy. Finance Committee, two thousand. Historical Commission, five hundred. Moderator Salary, two hundred. Planning Board, five thousand five hundred and forty-three. Recreation Committee, two thousand. Waging Personnel, zero. There was a hold on line one hundred and twenty, Council on Aging Support Staff.
Hi, John Duffy, three ninety-two Main Street. I guess I'd just like to ask why the, it's a forty-one percent increase, I'm just curious why that number.
Thank you. Anyone from Council on Aging want to address that, or otherwise?
I'm happy to address it unless Colleen Thompson wants to take it.
Well, I don't think she'll arm wrestle you for it, but.
So, that, that budget line funds our senior aide, which is our van driver, and also, the reason for the increase is because we've been fortunate enough to have one of the main assistants working in the Council on Aging office be funded through a grant program with Citizens for Citizens, but unfortunately, that grant funding is drying up right around October, so we have an obligation to bring her onboard as a staff member. That was one of the conditions of the grant, and we've been able to get extensions in the past, but that time is coming to an end. So this is to fund her salary for the remainder of fiscal twenty-three. So it's that amount plus the full-time van driver senior aide.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. So now we'll vote on total general government, one hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight. All in favor, raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority. Section three, Assessor's Office. Assessor's salaries, three dollars. Assistant Assessor, forty-one thousand one hundred and eighteen. Assessor's support staff, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety. Assessor's expense, twenty-two thousand seven hundred. Certification compensation, zero. Hearing no holds. All in favor of the total funding for the assessors, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and eleven, please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority. Town Clerk's Office. Town Clerk's salary, fifty-two thousand four hundred and forty-six. Certification compensation, one thousand. Town Clerk's support staff, thirty thousand eight hundred and six. Town Clerk's expense, eight thousand ninety-eight. Election and registration, five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. Election Support Staff, fifteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen. On the last one, okay. There's been a hold on the last line. Yes, go on.
Hi, John Duffy, three ninety-two Main Street again. Yeah, I just, I noticed it's a two hundred and fifty-six percent increase, I'm just wondering why such a, the number, basically.
Thank you. It's an election year, right? Yeah, so, we have an election coming up this year in the fall, and so it tends to go up every two years.
Two elections in the fall.
Two elections in the fall. Right? You got a primary and then the other one.
I, I'm guessing two years ago was also an election year, but because of COVID, it was lower. Is that the reason? Lower than usual?
Well, things, things were probably cheaper two years ago, too.
Oh, is that twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting confused with the years. All right, that seems nor, okay, sorry, that's all.
No problem, John. Okay, total Town Clerk's Office, one hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-nine dollars. All in favor, raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority. Okay, next section carries over to the next page, it's Accounting, Tax, and Treasurers. The accountant auditor, sixty-four thousand fifty dollars. Accountant Support Staff, three thousand dollars. Accountant Expenses, seven thousand dollars. Treasurer, Tax Collector's Salary, sixty-seven thousand three hundred and seventeen. Certification Compensation, one thousand. Treasurer Support Staff, forty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-five. And Treasurer, Tax Collector Expense, thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty. Hearing no holds. We'll vote on the, all in favor of the total budget for the accountant, tax, and treasurer office of two hundred and twenty-one thousand fifty-two dollars. Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority.
Unanimous.
Excuse me a minute. They say numbers in accounting is dry. They're right. Selectmen's Office. Selectmen Stipend, three dollars. Selectmen Administrative Assistant, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. Selectmen Expense, eight thousand six hundred and fifty. Town Administrator, one hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-one. Town Administrator Expense, four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. Computer Maintenance, twenty-four thousand. Memorial Day, five hundred. Town Buildings, five thousand five hundred. Building Supplies, five thousand five hundred. Town Custodial Services, twenty-seven thousand. Town Council, sixty thousand. There's a hold on that. Town Reports, twelve hundred. Utilities, forty-five thousand. So let's go back to the hold on Town Council line of sixty thousand dollars. John?
So, again, this is just kind of a, so back in fiscal year nineteen, I just kinda like trying to figure out why the numbers have gone as they have, because was it, was there a change in Town Council at that time, and now, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Okay, so the question is, it was ninety-one thousand three, four years ago, how has it changed, and why does it change the way it changes? Is that the way you're phrasing it?
Yes.
Over the years, it, it's fluctuated depending upon what's happening in the town at any given time. Say, for example, if we're in the middle of land transactions, just to use one example, we might use more Town Council billable hours than in a year where not as much is going on. Over the last two or three years, we seem to be hovering around the sixty thousand dollar mark. This current fiscal year that we're in, we had tried to fund it a little bit lower, we tried to be a little more conservative, but it seems like that's not really working out too well, so we wanted to go back up to the sixty thousand. But it fluctuates, it's not a predictable expense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That hold's removed, so now the total for the Selectmen's Office, three hundred and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Downhands, opposed. Unanimous. Board of Health. Health Stipend, three dollars. Health Support Staff, thirty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven. Health Expenses, four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. There was a hold on the second line, Health Support Staff, in the last one. Please come to the microphone and ask your questions. And the last one, please come to the microphone and ask your questions.
Hi, good evening. Brad Cronin, one seven six County Road, Chair of the Clinton Board of Health.
Yep.
I would move that the town raise and appropriate for line two eighty-three, the forty-one, nine hundred and ten requested.
Okay, so there's been a motion to change this to forty, to change line two eighty-three to the requested amount of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten. Does anyone second that motion? There's, and it's been moved and seconded, so we'll have a discussion on whether or not we should change that amount. Can you speak to it, please?
Sure. So this number reflects our personnel, which is health agents and administrative staff. Over the last two years, we've had some turnover in health agents. We have a part-time health agent now that's been very good and working with and very knowledgeable. We're trying to keep that person and keep people from turning over, trying to make the pay commensurate with surrounding areas and make it, we don't have the very money, we don't have very many hours for the person, so we're trying to make it a little more enticing for them to stay with us. The second part of that is administrative staff. In regards to the administrative staff, as you saw previously with the salaries, there's a range of salaries for individuals in their grade. The person, once they're hired, other than the cost of living adjustment, there is no set frequency or movement in the step. They stay at the position they started in. The, the step moves along with the cost of living adjustment, so they essentially stay where they are in the steps. Our administrative person has taken on increased responsibilities through COVID, now performing the task of infectious disease reporting, which is mandated. We previously had the visiting nurses that were doing that for us, unfortunately, they could no longer support us, so we had to find another way to do that. That fell on our administrative staff. So this is to move the person, our administrative personnel, who has been here nine years and who has not moved, other than cost of living in their step, to the top range of their step.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion or comment about this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Nathaniel Sides, Winnantucket Road, Chairman of the Finance Committee. On behalf of the Finance Committee, the reason we proposed the amounts that we did in this particular line, two eighty-three, first of all, for the health agents, we approved the exact amount that the Board of Health requested, so that is a moot point. We did approve the amount that was requested for the additional health agents, and that reflects their, their cost of living adjustment over the previous year. With respect to the administrative assistant for the department, we recognize that she has had numerous changes to her role over the past couple of years. However, there is a mechanism in place in the personnel bylaws for the, anybody in the town that's covered by the wage and personnel schedule that you voted on earlier, to move up in the range. I can't speak to what happened with the Board of Health over previous years, I can only speak to what has been requested this year. Sorry, I'm taking too long.
You're still good.
I see you looking at me.
I'm just checking.
What we determined this year was we went with, with historical precedent that has happened throughout the town and every department, not just the Board of Health. And historically, what has happened was town employees have been voted a cost of living adjustment, this year it is three percent. Past years, it has been another number. And then they are also eligible and have been eligible in past years for up to a two percent merit increase. So for this year, for fiscal twenty-three, that would be a five percent raise. So we took the administrative assistant's current salary and we added five percent, and that is how we arrived at the budget number that we present to you this evening. We have further informed the Board of Health that in, in recognition of the fact that their administrative assistant job function has changed dramatically, we suggested to them that they pursue a new job description for this person, and then that way they could perhaps move her up on the pay scale. And we would work with them and support them in that effort as they work with the wage and personnel. But that's how the number was determined, so on behalf of the Finance Committee, I would respectfully ask you to vote down this motion.
Anyone who hasn't spoken to this want to speak to it?
Good evening. Hotmore, eleven Granville Baker Way. I'm here to speak on behalf of the administrative assistant, but also to add some clarification. I'm just finishing my ninth year on the Board of Health. And for the last, well, not this past year, but for the previous seven years I've been the Chair, no one has ever spoken to me about an increase or anything. No, they start at the bottom, just as Brad said, and they get one point three percent, and the scale goes up one point three percent. No one has ever communicated that, and I believe that that's the case in a lot of cases. We've got one person, we've got one person that has been working here for twenty-one years, and he asked me last year, how long do I have to wait before I get to the top of the scale? Other administrative assistants, sixteen years, not at the top of the scale. So there's a systemic problem within the way things have been done within the town. And I do intend to address that. But we have to keep the good people that we have. And when you're trying to split pennies in half, it doesn't work. The administrative assistant we have now works not only till two o'clock, but after hours, seven days a week, checking on COVID through the Maven program and communicating to dispatch the fire chief and the police chief to keep our first responders safe. She doesn't get compensated at all for that, nothing. And I think she deserves it, and we, we don't even have to ask her to do it. She does it and bends over backwards for this town. And I, I think she's the unsung hero here over the past number of years. So I'm, I would move that we approve that and bring her to the top of the scale like other people in town that don't have even anywhere near the longevity that she has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on this topic?
May I address the issue about the?
Excuse me a second. Yes.
Jack Doyle, one ninety-three Main Street. I'm a former member of the Board of Health. Kathy came on when I was, when I was first there to help support us and when Jerry left. The problem with the Board of Health is that these people work extra hours for nothing. They don't ask for the pay because the job has to get done. Things are mandated by the state. It was getting worse, I've been off, I don't know how many years, but it started to get worse when everything happened. I was not there during COVID, but I know that the amount of hours that Kathy puts in is, is way more than she gets paid for. And I'm not disputing what anything that the Finance Committee does because we, we ran into it all the time with them, but there's certain things in the Board of Health that have to be done that don't come under the hours that she's working.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet about it? Okay, do you have some, a different argument you want to add to this thing?
I just wanted to, to explain the, the procedure for a merit increase is established in the wage and personnel bylaws. So if a particular board is unaware of that, I can't help you, but it's, it's there. There is a procedure in place in, speaking for the Finance Committee again, the majority of boards and committees and departments take advantage of that because we do grant raises frequently. So it's, it's there, there is a procedure in place. And, and again, we're not questioning the dedication, the work ethic, or the amount of work that's put forth. We are, we are trying to be consistent and fair to all town employees. You will hear me repeat that theme again later, I'm sure, in about ninety-seven seconds.
Anyone want to shed new light on one side or on the other of this? It's not, okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, that the health support staff line, two hundred and eighty-three, should be funded for forty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten. All in favor of that, please raise your left hand. Down hands opposed? Majority? Brian, you with?
Yeah, uh, it failed.
Wait, it failed in the back room? Brian?
That's correct.
Okay, then we need to know by how much it failed.
Zero votes for and two against.
Okay, so based on the majority in this room, there was a majority of way more than two, so that passes. There was also a hold on line two hundred and eighty-five, health expenses.
Thank you. Good evening. Brad Cronin, one seven six County Road, Chair of Clinton Board of Health. I would make a motion that the town raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-six oh two for line two eighty-five health expenses.
Second? So here a second? It was been moved and seconded. Would you care to speak to the Brad?
Yes, thank you. And I would like to thank the, the Finance Committee certainly for their time and consideration when we put this together initially. We are asking for the additional funding, one, for an increase to reflect some of the current expenditures this fiscal year for supplies and other expenses that have gone up, based on just cost of items as well as possibly increased usage by the Board of Health. In addition to that, we are also looking for funding to replace the visiting nurse association that used to do some of our not only infectious disease reporting, but also mandated follow-up. So as previously stated, our administrative person is doing the reporting. There is also follow-up that may be necessary depending on the cases that we have and what type of infectious disease we have. With the visiting nurse leaving and not conducting that, we're currently trying to fill that void. We don't know the exact cost of that, but we put a placeholder in there to account for the fact that we, we may need to fill that with some type of a medical professional to perform that service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak to this? Mr. Sides?
Nathaniel Sides, Winnantucket Road. When the budget request for this line was submitted by the Board of Health, there were a couple of items in there that have since become unnecessary. One of them was a legal expense line, and we explained to the board at that time that legal expenses all came under the same line that we discussed previously, the sixty thousand dollar legal line that we voted previously this evening. They also submitted a expense number, it was somewhere around fifteen hundred dollars. I don't have it in front of me, I don't have internet service, I can't look it up, I'm sorry. But that was for their copier, and again, we just voted to pay off their copier expense, special town meeting, so we removed that number from their budget request as well. So that is how the FinCom arrived at the forty-eight seventy-five number. We reduced their request as submitted by line items that are no longer necessary. And again, if, if the board has unforeseen expenses that they incur over the course of the next fiscal year, there is a mechanism in place with the reserve fund that we can, we can take care of that. So again, we would, we would recommend that the town vote the number forty-eight seventy-five as presented to the, as presented by the Finance Committee because it reflects the amount that was requested by the Board of Health initially.
Thank you. Anyone else? It's okay, seeing no hands, we have a motion and a second on the floor to appropriate, raise and appropriate for line two eighty-five health expenses, seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars instead of the four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five that was recommended. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Down hands, all opposed? I'm gonna have to ask you to stand, it's wicked even. All those who are in favor of the motion to raise the sum, please stand up and be counted by the tellers. And I'll also just remind the tellers, I read this in town meeting time, getting ready for tonight, that please also count those of us that are standing up here as well as yourselves when you do the count. Vote for, for the amendment. Yes, is the vote for the amendment? Your time's up.
Dinner's done.
All those opposed to the mo, to the motion to amend, please stand and be counted. Brian, you have a count for the back room?
I do. Zero, four, four against, zero, four, four against.
Thank you. So it was twenty in favor and forty-one against. The motion to amend the amount does not pass. So now we'll be voting, do we have an amended total for Board of Health?
I have it. Forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Okay, so now we'll vote the total for the Board of Health Department, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Highway Superintendent, seventy-five thousand, seventy-five. Public Works Administrative Assistant, nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty.
Hold.
Highway Labor, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one. General, General Highway, ninety thousand, five hundred and sixty-five.
Hold.
Maintenance, uh, equipment and maintenance, eight thousand. Cemetery Department, one thousand. Cemetery Labor, two thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Parks Department, ground maintenance, zero. Snow and ice, sixty thousand. Transfer station, one hundred and forty-one thousand.
Hold.
Transfer station staff, fifty-one thousand, forty.
Hold.
Okay, we have six holds here. First hold is on line three oh three, Public Works Administrative Assistant. First hold is on line 303, Public Works Administrative Assistant.
Mr. Moderator, I have masks to place the holds, but I am not speaking to them.
Okay, we have a hold, but somebody else is going to speak to it. Who might that be? And it looks like it's gonna be our Highway Surveyor.
Rob Furlot, 93 Maple Street, Highway Superintendent. Mr. Moderator, I was looking to hold that for the $19,427. She's been with us like 16 years. It's 0.9 of a percent we're arguing over. Where it's out to be?
Before we go on to that, we need a second. So there's been a motion to fund Public Works Administrative Assistant at $19,427 instead of the $19,230. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Please go ahead and speak to it, say it again.
Second motion?
There's been a second, and please explain your rationale.
Oh, she's been with us 16 years. It's 0.9 of a percent. It's literally $192 for the year. She's had her hours cut, and you know, she comes in when she doesn't get paid. She does a lot for us.
Anyone else want to speak to this?
You know I do.
Mr. Sides.
Actually, if you look at the request for this line versus fiscal '22, the number of hours has been increased for this line, so that's an error there to say that the hours have been decreased. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, the goal of the Finance Committee is to treat everyone fairly and equitably in all departments for the town. So we take the wage in personnel recommendation for the cost of living adjustment, which again, this year is 3%. We take the typical 2% increase, that up to 2% increase that is applicable in most departments, and that is how we arrived at the 5%. Yes, it is a small dollar amount. It's less than $200. However, again, we as a FinCom wanted to be consistent and fair across the board to everyone. We did not think it was fair or equitable to the other town employees to make an exception for this one town employee. So we brought her proposed salary in at the same 5%. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak to this line? So we have a motion and a second to change line 303, Public Works Administrative Assistant, to $19,427. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Down hand opposed? It passed, a majority in here?
Fails.
By how many?
Zero, four, four against.
We had more than four in the majority here, so it still passes as a majority. There's a hold now on Highway Labor. Who's gonna speak to that? Yes, sir.
Hi, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. So I was just looking at this line item over the past four years, or the previous four years, and I noticed it had gone down from 19 to 21, and then it went up a fairly significant amount the next year, and then this year it's a little bit more, I think. I'm just wondering if it has to do with people leaving, like if there's an additional person or if it's just an actual 30% raise or whatever. I'm just curious.
Highway Surveyor, want to speak to this?
Rob, I can get it if you don't want to. Sorry, Mr. Moderator. Nathaniel Sides, Winnetou Tuxit Road. This represents an added laborer for the department, and if I can hopefully be ahead of one of the other holds for line 325, I'm sure people are wondering why it's a zero line. This kind of kills two birds with one stone. By adding an additional laborer, we can, the Highway Department is taking on the role of the Parks Department, and so they are, it's, there's no longer need for a separate line for the Parks Department. It's going to be incorporated into the new personnel with the Highway Department, and that will cut down on the need for overtime and that sort of thing. So it's, in the long run, a cost savings effort.
Does that answer your question, John? Next hold is on line 310, General Highway.
Mr. Moderator, Rob Furlot, 93 Maple Street. I motioned to request that the line is funded at 19, oh, sorry, wrong one. Motion to fund that the line at requested amount of $96,970.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to fund line 310, General Highway, at $96,970. Care to speak to that, Rob?
There was a miscommunication between us and FinCom. They just put them back what was taken from my level of funded budget.
Okay, okay, and you might as well stay close, there's a couple more holds in your department, so.
Thank you.
Save your trip. Anyone want to address that?
Sure. By way of explanation for how the FinCom arrived at our number here, there was a line item on this budget request for the phone system that, again, is no longer needed now that the town, we have a townwide phone system. So that was about $1,600. There were also a couple of equipment-related lines that were submitted under this general highway line that we felt should have been submitted under line 315, which is the equipment line. Again, as Mr. Furlot said, it's something of a miscommunication, I think, between the FinCom and Highway and probably the accountant as well. Checking that line for this year, I believe they have only spent about $500 out of their $8,000 budget. So I think if you get some tools you want to buy, go shopping in the next six weeks. But that was why we level funded the $8,000 for 315 and took those two equipment lines out of 310.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to modify line 310 to $96,970 instead of the $90,565 recommended in the warrant. All in favor, please raise your right hand. This is of the amendment. Down hands opposed? Down, put your hands down. Forward again, please, raise your hands. Raise them up high, please, not by your head, so I make it easy. Okay, thank you. Down hands opposed? It's a majority carries.
It fails here.
By?
Four.
By four. It carries, still a majority. Line 325, there was a hold. But you're okay now with his explanation? Okay, so remove the hold from that. Line 335, Transfer Station, $141,000, there was a hold on that. Who put the hold on?
Lisa, you want to explain it? You want to? You can explain.
There was an unanticipated 3% increase in wage management fees, so that's why it's gone up that little bit from $145,230 was the requested item.
Hold on a sec. So are you requesting a modified amount from the 141?
Yes, yes, $145,230. It was an unanticipated 3% increase from wage management.
Okay, okay, so there's a motion to modify the Transfer Station line, to modify the Transfer Station line from $141,000 to $145,235. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
And the reason it was given was that the waste management fees went up. Any other, anyone speak to that besides?
I think just to check the number, it's 145,230.
145,230, is that correct, Rob? I have a...
Yes.
Okay, 145,230. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing no hands. All in favor of the modified number for line 335 of $145,230, raise your right hand, please. Down hands opposed? Unanimous in here.
Unanimous.
That passes, so we have a new number there. Finally, for this section, Transfer Station Staff, there was a hold on that line.
I motioned to fund that line at the requested amount of $53,481.
Is there a second? There's been a motion made and seconded to fund line 338, Transfer Station Staff, at the requested amount of $53,481. Comments?
I believe there was some vacation time that might have been overlooked. When a guy goes on vacation, you need somebody to come in to work that, and I believe that was the difference.
Any other comments or explanations?
It was the same, that was part of it, but there was also the 5% versus 5.9%.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of the amended amount for line 338 of $53,481, raise your right hands, please. Down hands opposed? Majority?
Fails, four against.
It passes in here by more than four, so that modified number. That's all the holds cleared. We have new numbers for three lines. What's our new total?
687,989.
So, all in favor of total funding for Public Works at $687,989, please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous. Total Personal Property Protection, line 340, Animal Inspector, $3,200. Animal Control Officer, $5,000. Animal Control Expense, zero. Tree Warden Salary, $11,297. Tree Warden Expense, $10,425. Hearing No Holds. All in favor of funding the total Personal Property Protection Section at $29,922, please raise your hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous? Now we're talking. Building Department. Building Inspector, $22,000. Deputy Administrative Assistant, $32,255. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, $12,000. Wiring Inspector, $18,000. Zoning Administrator, $20,000. Department Expenses, $1,300. Hearing No Holds. All in favor of funding Building Department at $105,555, please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Total Fire EMS. Fire Chief Salary, $122,500. Fire EMS Services, $62,000. EMS Medical Supplies, $20,000. Fire EMS Salaries, $572,000. Fire EMS Equipment and Repair, $16,000. Fire Building Utilities, $15,500. Fire Vehicle Maintenance, $16,000. We have a hold on line 500, Fire Chief Salary.
Excuse me, I was supposed to place a hold. I should have put a hold, please, on 110, I mean 510.
Okay, we'll get to that, Lisa, thank you. Okay, there's also a hold on 510. Okay, the hold on 500, Fire Chief Salary. Mr. Duffy.
Hi. Just a quick question on the percentage increase, how it's worked over the past, since fiscal year '20. Well, yeah, I guess I'm just basically wondering the number, what the percentage, why that number was decided on? Because it is a significant amount, it's not a large percentage.
So you're asking about why this year's number was?
Yeah, I am also curious about the previous years.
Well, stick it to this one, so. Who wants to address that?
Mr. Moderator, through you. This is a contracted position, and this is the contract dollar value that the Board of Select negotiated with the Fire Chief. In appreciation of his excellent service to the town.
Okay, so that hold is cleared, and Mrs. Hart?
Yes.
Line 510, there's a hold.
Yes, I think somebody, the chief's maybe gonna speak to that?
Is the Fire Chief gonna speak to that?
Mr. Moderator, Steve Silver, Fire Chief, Town of Climpeton, 24 Pokes Farm.
Thank you.
Here to speak on the hold that's been placed on line number 510. I make a motion that we fund the line at $600,000 and to fund it by a transfer of $220,000 from the ambulance fund and $380,000 by raise and appropriate.
Run that by me again, please.
Certainly. So we would fund $600,000 to the line item 510 for salaries by a transfer of $220,000 from the ambulance fund and an additional $380,000 by raise and appropriate.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment, explanation? So there's been a, the motion is to raise, to increase the recommended from $572,000 to $600,000, and then the two sources of funding for that $600,000 were part of the motion, $220,000 from ambulance fund and $380,000 from raise and appropriate.
Mr. Moderator, if I may. The Finance Committee has done a fine job in sorting through a very difficult time and a very difficult salary appropriation. One of the things that's very trying in a fire department-type budget item is we are a dynamic schedule. It's not that we can say we have a 40-hour employee that works five days a week. It's not that we can say we have 168 hours to fill per shift, so to speak, per week. Our schedule changes sometimes daily, absolutely weekly, and it changes by callback. When we have an incident, we have to call people back in. It changes unfortunately by some sick out. The joke in a way, in an odd way, in the fire service right now is finding a cross-train firefighter/paramedic is like finding a unicorn at this point, and I am not the only chief that has that problem. We essentially do not have any part-time firefighter/paramedics at this time. When an urgent care will pay upwards of $40 to $50 an hour for a paramedic, it's very difficult for me to entice them. However, I can assure you, the people that we have are professionals and, and I say without reservation, lifesavers. We're bringing this budget up to $600,000 to account for the unforeseen expenses that we have to budget for. We're bringing it up because we have spent more money this year than lost, and it appears to be it's going to go that way. One of the problems we have, whether you subscribe to the idea or not, is irrelevant to me, but there is a climate situation where we've had more intense storms, which has caused us to staff up more for sometimes upwards of 72 hours to address the problems that we have in the town, and this all costs money. On top of that mandated training that we have to pay our people for increases, it seems, daily. So although the Finance Committee did a fine diligence to come to their number, I respectfully disagree with it, and I move that we raise and appropriate through the channels that were aforementioned, the $600,000. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comment about this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Nathaniel Sides, Finance Committee Chairman. The Finance Committee is very comfortable with our number, and here's why. We used actual data to compile this number, and by that I mean we took the actual salaries of the current firefighter personnel. We used actual call data that they provided for us, which included some storms and callback information. We took actual schedule information that was provided to us by the Fire Department, and we crunched those numbers to arrive at our recommended amount of 572. To get to that number, we added in a 15% figure for callbacks that the chief references because he's correct. They can't predict when they're going to need personnel, and so they have to have a figure in there. The data that they shared... The data that they shared with us ranged from a twelve percent to a fifteen percent callback usage. So we gave them the benefit of the doubt and added in fifteen percent, gave them the high end of that number. Further, we added in an additional nineteen percent figure to account for training needs and other such things that the chief referenced just now. Lastly, it became apparent to us over the course of our research that there appears to be a misallocation of personnel in the department that we would like to see rectified, and we feel that the difference of twenty-eight thousand dollars will more than be offset by the proper utilization in terms of scheduling of personnel. So, while we don't wish to criticize anyone, we do feel that there is, there could be some better things done in terms of scheduling in the department. We feel that there could be some better oversight on many levels of the department, and we feel that there should be some accountability. So we recommend that you overturn this request for an amended number and stick with our five seventy-two. And again, should something unforeseen occur, we do have a procedure in place using the reserve fund to take care of those unforeseen circumstances. Thank you.
Any other one have a comment? Let me see if anyone else wants to speak first, Chief. Okay, you have something new to add to the argument?
Yes, I do. We did not come to the six hundred thousand dollar and some change figure lightly. My original thought was for six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. However, after speaking with FinCom, we came back, the town administrator, myself, and one of the Board of Selectmen sat down and dug deep into the numbers and managed to take six hundred and twenty, excuse me, reduce the six hundred and twenty-three thousand down to six hundred. The veiled allegation that we are imprudent or not spending our money properly? I'm sorry, sir, I take a great offense to that.
Please keep your comments through me.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, Mr. Moderator. I take great offense to the chairman of the Board of FinCom with such a veiled allegation. These are professional men and women. We save lives, we save your property, we are there when we have to be, and we always have been. The situation that the chairman is alluding to is that we have a fire prevention professionally trained and certified captain onboard that was in a position like that when I took over as chief. We did, and a couple of years ago, a couple of fiscals ago, changed some of the figures that were allocated for an administrative assistant and rolled it in. So, yes, in the spirit of cost-effectiveness, we have taken the choice of making that particular officer maybe a little more available for filling in when we go out and we already have multiple calls going on, which happens quite a bit. One of the things that you don't see in some of the figures is when we go mutual aid to other towns and essentially leaving this town wide open, and when we use our day captain and myself and anyone else that's around to fill in. And let us not forget, I'm under a strong chief statute, chapter one forty-eight. So, how we configure our shifts is on me and not on anyone else. Respectfully, I say thank you.
Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator? We, John Trainor, Crescent Street. We, the town administrator, the chief, and myself asked that we go back through the numbers because of the Finance Committee coming in, and there was a big discrepancy between the six twenty-three and the five seventy-two, whatever. The town administrator then went through and took every person that worked part-time or full-time and worked through their salaries, how they, as best we could, figure out how many part-timers were coming back because there was a call, and came up with the six hundred thousand. That's how we got to the six hundred thousand number. At the same time, we've seen a change in where the revenue is coming from because there are more ambulance runs. So in the past, we've always used two hundred thousand from the ambulance fund to fund the EMS side of the services. This year, we're recommending that, in fact, we believe we can use two hundred and twenty thousand without affecting the ability to buy a new ambulance down the road. The ambulance fund was set up that an amount would be put in reserve each year so that when four or five, six years went by and we needed a new ambulance, we wouldn't have to raise and appropriate all in that next year. But because we are seeing higher revenues because of more runs, we feel comfortable that an additional twenty thousand can come from the ambulance fund. That doesn't quite square to get the six hundred thousand down to the Finance Committee's number. But I believe in this case, we owe the Finance Committee a better way of sitting down and going through all the shifts and resolving the number. But that's next year. We're here now, and I believe the six hundred thousand is a fair number. Six hundred thousand two oh seven, and I would support it.
The motion's for six hundred thousand even.
Is it? Okay, I'll support that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brad Cronin, one seven six County Road. Speaking in favor of the motion. I have twenty-six years' experience in the fire service. While not with the Town of Plimpton, certainly knowledgeable about the fire service, serving for several years on a union board, negotiating contracts for a department with a twenty-one million dollar budget. And I can tell you that the complexity of fire department scheduling and staffing is something that even a seasoned, full-time city solicitor and accountant may not have a good grasp of. And we've had two selectmen, select people, excuse me, speak in favor of the chief and his running of the department. And I think if that's the number he requested, we should give him the benefit of the doubt to run the department how he sees fit. Thank you.
Does anyone else care to speak to this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The budget figures that Mr. Trainor just referred to double-counted one employee for the fire department. So I just wanted to point that out to the town. So if you remove some of those hours, you get down to the five seventy-two number. So yes, the math all works out, but they counted somebody twice. And I would just like to point out that over the course of the last four fiscal years, the total fire line has increased by nineteen percent. So I think this town has proven that we support our fire department, our EMS department, in the past. And even at the lower five seventy-two number, that still represents a ten percent increase over last year.
Anyone else?
Irving Butler, forty-nine Maple Street. One of the things that happens in the fire department and in ambulance service, and I'm a regular customer. I've been in that ambulance, and I've tested all the ambulances I've ever had, unfortunately. But the other day, one time, well, one time I went, had to go to the hospital. I ended up going in Halifax's ambulance because of getting the callback for Plimpton. They didn't make a callback. The ambulance was out, so I had to go in Halifax. And what happened several times, it happened the other day, that Plimpton went to, well, Plimpton was out of town anyways. It ended up that they needed callback, they needed extra people because Plimpton's ambulance went out of town. Carver's ambulance came to Plimpton. It was a mess. But they need the funds so they can call back and have the second ambulance, which we own, available to make the call. And unfortunately, it happens more frequently than we like to believe. But need the extra funds so they can bring the callback when our ambulance is out of town or on a run. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who should speak to this or bring something new other than what we've heard? Okay, seeing no hands. All in favor of the motion to modify the funding for line five-ten fire EMS salaries to six hundred thousand dollars, with two hundred and twenty thousand of that coming from the ambulance fund, and three hundred and eighty thousand coming from raising appropriate? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous?
Majority.
Okay, so that clears all the holds. We have a new total for fire EMS services.
Eight hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. Okay, all in favor of the total funding for fire EMS services of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous?
Majority.
Passes with majority. Police services. Police chief salary, one hundred and eighteen thousand. Police salaries, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand four fifty-five. Police department clerical, thirty-nine thousand twenty-two. Police services, one hundred and nine thousand five sixty-eight. Police station utilities, twenty-six thousand three thirty-five. Motor vehicles, seventy-five thousand fifty. Hearing no holds. All in favor of a total police services budget of one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous? Emergency dispatch services, two hundred thousand dollars. There's a hold. Yes, sir.
Hi, John Duffy, three ninety-two Main Street. I'm just, so I noticed this has been increasing by fifty thousand every year. Is that something that's going to continue for the future? Just curious.
Thank you.
We hope not. The projected amounts for the next two fiscal years are both set at that two hundred thousand dollar number. The fire chief and I negotiated like heck on behalf of the town, and this was what we came up with. We receive our dispatch services on a regional basis. We're part of what's known as the Rock, or the Regional Old Colony Communication Center. They service a lot of other communities, and we had hoped that maybe we could hold them to a smaller increase. We were ideally thinking we'd come in around one hundred and seventy-five thousand, because we were told at one point in the past that when they bring additional communities onboard, that that would help offset some of the costs for a small town like us. But it appears that they have an updated facility, and they're going to be looking to charge all of the communities almost in brackets, just based on level of service. So towns under a certain population will be paying two hundred thousand. That sounds like it's going to be their minimum going forward. And then other towns that are larger and have higher call volume would be paying more than the two hundred thousand. At this stage, it sounds like we're going to be able to do a one-year contract, but if we wanted to do a two-year contract, we could lock into that two hundred thousand number for the following fiscal year as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this hold? All in favor of funding the emergency dispatch at two hundred thousand dollars? Raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Majority?
Unanimous.
Majority passes. Veterans. Veterans agent, nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. Veterans administration, eight hundred and fifty. Veterans benefits, forty-five thousand. Hearing no holds. All in favor of funding the veterans department at fifty-five thousand two hundred and seven dollars? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous? Library. Library director, fifty-six thousand six hundred and fifty. Library support staff, forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-four. Library expenses, sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-one. Hearing no holds. All in favor of funding the library at a total of one hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous? Almost done, folks, you're doing great. Local school. Elementary school costs, two million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Special education, one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand twenty-two. Vocational education, sixty thousand. I think that does it. Hearing no holds. All in favor of total local school budget at three million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two? Please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Is your hand still up for? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Regional schools. Regional school assessment, two million, two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and eight. Debt and interest regional school, one hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred and thirty. Hearing no holds. All in favor of funding our regional schools at two million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars? Raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
We don't need to do the all schools. Reserve fund, one hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and ten. Interest loan and refunds, three thousand. Principal and interest, zero. Denit debt exclusion, sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-four. Police station debt, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Hold.
Okay, we have two holds. The first hold is on the principal and interest line.
Hi, John Duffy, three ninety-two Main Street. This is, I'm guessing this is something that's, I'm just curious why it's gone down to zero, this particular?
We paid the bill.
We paid the bill.
Oh, okay. Great.
Always liked that answer. And Mrs. Hart? Did you put a hold on that last one?
Yes, I will make, and I will speak to this one. I moved at the town vote to transfer from capital stabilization the sum of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for line number eight hundred and twenty-five police station debt. This number that I quoted is twenty thousand dollars lower than the budget due to the remaining funds. We have funds left this year in the budget, so we can lower that number.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to fund the police station debt at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and take that from capital stabilization. Is there a second?
Second.
It's made in second. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion?
Could I just say that the reason that that money, because we every year vote that out of capital stabilization, because we told you guys we wouldn't raise that on your taxes, it kind of works like an article, and even though we're appropriating it, it stays in there. So if there's a little bit of money left over, it will continue to accumulate, and that's why this year there's a little more than twenty thousand dollars. We figure we'll put that back in to help with the taxes.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, so on the motion that's been made in second it to modify line eight twenty-five police station debt to one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven fifty, and to fund that from capital stabilization, please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed? Unanimous in here?
Unanimous.
Okay, now, that clears that last hold in that section. So for total funding of reserve fund, interest, principal and interest, debt exclusion of three hundred and forty-seven thousand?
Three twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, three twenty-seven thousand, six oh four. Please raise your right hand. Down hand opposed? Downhand opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Congratulations, we finished Article Four. You deserve a hand. But the good news, even on top of that, is we don't have to go to five. We can jump right to Article Nineteen, because that's where we left off before we stopped for the special. So page six of the, of the warrant. At least of my warrant here. Article Nineteen. To see if the town will vote to join power options, a program organized and administered pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section one thirty-seven, and to ratify all actions taken by the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Town Administrator and Board of Assessors pursuant to Article twenty-three of the annual town meeting held on May twelfth, twenty twenty-one, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, John Mulhamsen, 255 Main Street. I would move the article as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, and this is going to require a two-thirds vote. Seeing no hand for discussion?
Where are we?
I'm sorry, we're on Nineteen.
Nineteen, right, power options. All, I'm sorry, yes.
Deborah Anderson, forty-nine Elm Street. What is power options?
There's a question about what power options is. Would somebody like to explain that?
Mr. Moderator, power options is a consortium by which we're actually, would join in order to be able to put solar panels on the back roof of the school here. It allows us to, because it's a consortium, allows us to be able to utilize negotiated rates and providers that are part of the consortium.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Anyone else with a question? You're good.
I heard something. Anyway, Michelle Yanis, 392 Main Street. If you join this agreement, do you have any way to get out of it? Is this something continuous, that we as a town have to be part of there if we join?
No.
We can get out of it?
Well, we're, we're, we're undertaking it for the purposes of this particular item. There's other, other options that we can utilize for them for other negotiated rates from utility perspective, but we do not have to stay with them for any extended period of time.
And no other projects that we have to be involved?
We don't have to utilize them.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, we don't have to utilize them for any specific project. We can do that project by project.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Nineteen, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Two-thirds majority in here?
Unanimous.
Okay, so that passes at two-thirds. Article Twenty. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Fifty-Nine, Section Five N, which authorizes the Board of Selectmen to establish a veteran property tax work-off abatement program whereby a veteran or spouse of a deceased or disabled veteran may volunteer his or her services to the town and earn a reduction in his or her property tax bill. The said program will be available as of January one, twenty twenty-three, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, Ethan Stiles, eighty-five West Street, Brooklyn Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second. It's been made in seconded. Any comments, discussions? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Twenty, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous? Article Twenty-one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of ten thousand dollars for the purchase of new personal protective equipment, PPE, to replace aging PPE or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Steve Silva, Fire Chief, Twenty-four Pope's Farm. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of ten thousand dollars for the purchase of new personal protective equipment to replace aging personal protective equipment.
Second.
Most of the main seconded for Article Twenty-one, and that funding would come from free cash. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Twenty-one? You beat me to it. Downhands opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article Twenty-two. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of eight thousand dollars for the purchase, repair, and/or replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, a CBA, or take any other action relative thereto. You might as well just stand by the microphone.
Try to keep the protocol. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of eight thousand dollars for the purchase, repair, and/or replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus.
Okay, so the, the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Most of the main seconded for this article and the funding is from free cash. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor of Article Twenty-two, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article Twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of five thousand dollars for the required five percent match for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three anticipated award of the FEMA AFG Safe Grant for hose replacement and communications equipment replacement for the fire department, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Steve Silva, Twenty-four Pope's Farm, also Fire Chief. And sir, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of five thousand dollars for the required five percent match for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three anticipated award of the FEMA AFG Safe Grant and for hose, excuse me, for hose replacement and communications equipment replacement for the fire department, and anything incidental or related thereto.
Second.
Most of the main seconded for Article Twenty-three. The funding source, free cash. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor, raise your left hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous?
Tried that before and nobody caught it.
Article Twenty-four. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of five thousand dollars to be added to the general consultant and preliminary design services article as voted pursuant to Article Twenty-six at the May twelfth, twenty twenty-one annual town meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, John Mulhamsen, 255 Main Street, Chair of Town Properties Committee. I would move the article with the funding source to be free cash.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second for Article Twenty-four, the funding source, free cash. Any discussion or explanation or?
Just a brief explanation. This is a article that we created last year that we utilized for consulting services for various town property needs to make sure that we can bring the right numbers to town meeting.
Thank you. Any other comment or discussion? Seeing no hands. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article Twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to cover any remaining cost of the replacement and/or repair of the middle and rear portions of the roof on the townhouse, including all necessary work and improvements related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article with the funding source being capital stabilization.
Second.
Okay, Article Twenty-five has been moved and seconded with the funding source being capital stabilization. Is there any discussion or comment?
Mr. Moderator, I would, I would just want to let town meeting know that we've actually gone out to bid for this, uh, project. Uh, we've received the bids, and this is the amount necessary to add to what we appropriated last year to be able to get the project finished.
Any, any one other, anyone else with comments or questions? Seeing no hands. All in favor, this will be a two-thirds vote required because it's from capital stabilization. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous? Article Twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of eleven thousand, five hundred dollars for upgrades to the Plymouth Public Library, including all necessary to design, construct, furnish, and equip such upgrades, and anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Still here, Mr. Moderator. Uh, we're going to move the article, uh, and capital stabilization would be the funding source.
Okay.
Second.
The article's been moved and seconded, um, with the source being capital stabilization. Is there any comment or discussion?
Uh, the intent of this article is to put new carpet in the children's room in the library, to sort out lighting issues with respect to the old part of the library, and also to sort out some hot water issues that we're having in the library since we don't currently have any.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, this will also require two-thirds votes because the funding source is from one of the stabilization funds. All in favor of Article Twenty-six, please raise your right hand. Downhands opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article Twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of eight thousand, five hundred dollars for exterior refurbishment, repairs, and upgrades to the old townhouse, including all necessary work and improvements related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I would move the article with the funding source being free cash.
Second.
Article Twenty-seven's been moved and seconded with the funding source being free cash. Any discussion or explanation or questions?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, this is, uh, the continuation of sorting out a mold issue that we have in the building. Uh, the back room of the library, of the old townhouse, which is the part that sort of is added off of the townhouse, had a serious mold issue with, uh, inside the walls and uh, out, uh, all around the building, largely due to, uh, wet insulation. This would, uh, restore the envelope of the building, particularly with the roof on that part of the building, as well as some other exterior repairs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? This is just a simple majority because it's free cash. All in favor of Article Twenty-seven, please raise your right hands. Downhands opposed. Majority? Article Twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study, programmatic design, schematic design, and planning services, including generation of cost estimates, geotechnical services, and evaluation of current and future utilities and infrastructure for the future construction of a new fire station, or anything incidental or related thereto, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article with two funding sources. Uh, the first one being general stabilization for two hundred and ten thousand, and the second one being capital stabilization for ninety, for a total of three hundred thousand.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded for Article Twenty-eight with the funding sources coming from two places. General stabilization for two hundred and ten thousand of the total, and capital stabilization for ninety thousand. Discussion, comments, explanations?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, our existing fire station was built almost fifty years ago to house a small call fire department. Since that time, we have seen the department grow and adapt to meet the current demands and needs of our town. The size of the fire apparatus has nearly doubled in the last fifty years, partially to address the fact that firefighters are no longer permitted to ride on the outside of vehicles. And since these apparatus carry water and/or foam, they're required to be kept in a climate-controlled environment. Today, unlike fifty years ago, we have a comprehensive EMS advanced life support service with two ambulances that require climate-controlled storage. Our own EMS services have an impressive response times, which currently average around four minutes from when the station receives a call, thanks to twenty-four hour onsite staffing. When fighting fires today, our firefighters are presented with significantly more complex hazards than they were fifty years ago. The wide variety of materials they are exposed to greatly increases the need for cleaning of their gear and themselves post-event, and the space to safely do it in. Approval of this article will allow the town to evaluate the construction and cost of a purpose-built, multi-bay, up-to-code, safe and modern facility. This facility will provide for essential administrative and personnel space that will promote the safety and security and health of our fire and EMS personnel and station visitors, while also providing appropriate space for maintaining and storing our fire apparatus, equipment, and supplies. This project will enable us to validate our needs analysis, to develop construction drawings that incorporate all current requirements, including OSHA compliance, to complete a geotechnical analysis of the site, to evaluate and design future utilities and infrastructure, and perhaps most importantly, to provide construction cost estimates that will help us to determine when we can fit this expense into our budget. Developing these plans and cost estimates now has the additional benefit of having these plans on the shelf should we not be able to promptly proceed with construction in the event that we have to delay construction for a few years due to budget needs, or if we were to face OSHA enforcement due to an accident at the station. We could leverage these plans and simply obtain new cost estimates to reflect current costs prior to proceeding. The Town Properties Committee is committed to utilize professional resources to minimize costs, improve outcomes, and plan for our town's future while also working to help mitigate the impact of our town's property on our annual budget. We cannot plan for our future without getting comprehensive and accurate estimates of costs associated with this project. The existing station has more than fulfilled its original purpose and needs to be replaced to safeguard our fire and EMS personnel, our valuable apparatus and equipment, and to meet the current and future needs of our department. Voting for this article will allow us to get the information needed to effectively work with the town's finance staff, the finance committee, and the selectmen to determine how this important project will fit into our budget. Thanks for your attention to this, and through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this item?
Jack Doyle, one ninety-three Main Street. Uh, I, uh, agree quite a bit with this, but we have already had a proposal on this. I think it was the Reinhardt group that did that, John. And what I wanted to know is if we could just get those plans, and, and I know that there's multitudes of changes in them, but it, it was a good plan, and it included a police station, which we no longer need. It also included some, uh, doing what this, the townhouse. But what I'd like to see is if we could just get those plans, bring them out, and, and look at them, and see if there's any feasibility that, that we could save some money rather than spend the three hundred thousand. And I agree with John that we do need all the stuff that he said, but I, I thought that maybe, uh, this proposal might give us a little bit of a lead and, uh, maybe save us some bucks.
Thank you. You want to address the difference between what is being proposed here, John, and the Reinhardt study that was done in twenty thirteen?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Uh, what was done in twenty thirteen was really a needs analysis, which is only a very minor part of this proposal. It, this proposal was really focused on the actual design documents. So what, what was done back then said, hey, you know, you're going to need new, new stuff. We know we need that. What we're going to do is try and level set our analysis based on what the fire chief and the department currently needs, which is probably like two weeks of the work here. And then the rest of it is actually getting construction documents that we can get proper estimates off of to understand what our true costs would be on this and to see where that fits in our budget. And, and I can't say that enough. Just because we vote this tonight, if we do vote this and we do get your support, this does not mean that we're building a fire station next year. We have to evaluate the actual numbers and understand how that fits into the budget from a proper fiscal perspective, based on other debt coming off of, off of the budget and all that. We have to work with the finance committee, we have to work with the finance staff, and, and determine where we can fit this. We have no intentions of going for any sort of override or anything with this project.
Thank you. Are there any, any other comments?
Mr. Moderator, Harry Weichel, sixty-eight Center Street. I don't have any real problem with this process. My problem is the use of the three hundred thousand dollars right now. There are many other things within this town that the money could be spent on. Our roads. There are many other things within this town that the money could be spent on: our roads. We've already appropriated two hundred thousand. That's a drop in the bucket that we need for the roads in this town. There have been several studies done on the fire station. At the outset of the Town Properties Committee, we looked at both a police and a fire station. That was the reason for the committee, to evaluate them. And at that point in time, we were looking at a cost of a fire station of somewhere between twelve and fourteen million dollars. This town can't afford that now, or maybe not in five or six years.
Okay.
So I am in total disagreement with the spending of this three hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you, Harry. Yep.
Hi, Artmore, eleven Granville Baker Way. And being the frugal Yankee that I am, I would like to see the... You smile, Nate. I would like to see the three hundred thousand used for an evaluation. Can we rehabilitate, rebuild the present fire station, which was built as a fire station? I talked to the retired chief, and he agrees. It was built as a fire station. It's stick-built. You can do anything you want with a stick-built fire station. You can go off the left side, you can go off the right side, you can go out the back, you can go up. You can do anything you need. And if there's a difference between spending ten or twelve or fourteen million on a new building, and I can get just what we need, brought up the code and everything else for five, I'm gonna opt for the five.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to stop there for a minute so I let both you and Harry talk about things that are related to this, like what could a town do with three hundred thousand dollars otherwise? But that's not really what this is about. This is about we're deciding whether to spend three hundred thousand dollars for this specific item, not to spend it on something else, nor to spend twelve million dollars later. That's not part of tonight's discussion.
Right.
Okay, so that's...
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator, we have our speaker in this room.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Colleen Thompson, one ninety-two Main Street. So I've been in town for about sixteen years, and for most of those years, we've been talking about our public safety buildings. As a selectman and then as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, I have a lot of experience working on this project. We did build the police station. We built it in time, on time, and on budget. I think that this is the next logical step for the fire station. We know that we need one. The committee, the Town Properties Committee, has looked at whether the current station can be rehabbed or not. It doesn't seem to be a reasonable decision to make for our future. This study prepares us. It gives us documents, designs, plans, looks at the land that we currently have at the town center, and allows us to be prepared to take the step when town meeting decides to fund this. And there's always a chance that the federal government or the state government will put forth some legislation to fund the fire stations, and we would be ready to get those funds. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Okay, we got... First, no, you've... You are arm wrestle. Go ahead.
Mark Rothfuss, twenty Montello Street. And it has to do with the face value of that three hundred thousand itself. Being a layman, and I guess the answer's gonna be yes, but...
Please step up a little bit.
It's a large amount of money. Has that been shopped around? I mean, is that what these studies cost and go for? I have no idea. I mean, just...
Good question.
Somebody could talk to that.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, that number has been shopped around, both through various architectural firms as well as a project manager. And the part that I would remind you here is that we have to go out to bid for this. So we will get a competitive bid, and we'll go with the, you know, the appropriate bid for this project. So if we end up, if it ends up costing us two hundred and fifty thousand, that's great. We save fifty thousand.
Thank you. Did I answer your question?
One other point of context. We spent a hundred and fifty thousand to do this same work for the police station, and that was six years ago now, and costs have gone up quite a bit, and this is a bigger project.
Hi, Jason Lewis, two sixty-eight Main Street. I can't believe I'm gonna say this. I actually agree with John the first time.
For me.
I really do agree we need to update. I think with inflation right now, with gas at almost five dollars a gallon, I think with the taxes in town already ridiculous, I think we should hold off on this for a while because times right now are tough for people in town, with gas at almost five dollars a gallon, everything else going up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a... Yes.
Hello, Steve Silva, twenty-four Pope's Farm, also the fire chief. And I would be remiss if I didn't put my two cents in, I suppose, on this, but Harry, when you were speaking, you brought something to my mind that I think was perfect. You threw some figures out there, and I understand where you got the figures.
Steve, please come through me, not through personal.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Apologize.
It's okay.
But there were figures that were thrown around that are, you know, it could cost this, it could cost that. Well, that is the whole point of this three hundred thousand dollars. We don't know what it's gonna cost. And more importantly, we have an idea of what we need, but we need to solidify that. That's just a piece of this pie that we're talking about. We're not building a Taj Mahal, we're not proposing anything like that, but we still have to have the professionals come in and say to us, not only what this town needs for not just today, but for thirty years from now, but more importantly, can we even put it where we want to put it? What is the engineering items that have to take place? I am not a builder. I never claimed to be a builder. But I do know we are in desperate need of the fire station, and this is a first step into that. With what has gone in the past, I have no idea. I just know that this is a logical progression, and I would hope the town would consider it. And thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet on this topic? Yep. And then you're next.
Andrew Norton, fifty-nine Mayflower Road. I'm also on the fire department.
Step up a little closer, Andrew.
I'm also on the fire department. What the town has to consider in spending this three hundred thousand dollars today, you're gonna save money down the road because it's gonna set out exactly what the town needs so we don't build too big, or we don't build too small, and then get into something that wasn't appropriate. So kicking this matter down the road isn't gonna do anybody any good. The price of everything is going up. This project, five years ago, would probably be significantly less than it is today. So I would ask that the town vote in favor of this.
Ross McPherson, six Forest Street. I'm in construction engineering, and I've been in the construction industry for almost twenty years now. Clearly, the existing station has outlived its useful life, and we have to decide whether we want to try to renovate it or build new. And in construction, the known is far cheaper than the unknown. So yes, we have a building that is standing, but if we renovate it, it's gotta come up to current codes. And even just putting a little bit more insulation in the roof of the DPW causes us to have to reinforce the structural components of the roof. And that was only a small project and a tiny amount of weight. I have no doubt that the fire station needs significant remediation to support the kind of project that the fire department needs. We don't have the space we need for housing fire apparatus, we don't have the space we need for housing fire personnel. So I don't think renovation is a good path. I think we will end up basically taking the station almost to the ground and then putting something else there. And while we're doing that, we have to house the fire department. So we have to build a temporary facility for them to occupy while we would renovate an existing facility. The town of Greenfield occupied their new temporary fire station last fall. They allocated two million dollars, and their fleet is just over twice the size of ours for that particular station. So that's talking about spending a million plus on something we intend to not have. And I think that money would be better spent on something that is a permanent fixture of our town for the next fifty or sixty years. I just, looking at it, it is a lot of money, and I don't think anyone's trying to beat around the bush on that. But with these types of projects, the money spent upfront pays dividends on the back end. This is the same procedure and the same process we followed for the police station, and that project delivered what was promised. And that's what we would aim to do with the fire station. And, you know, as an engineer, I have to rely on the math. And the math tells me that renovating our existing station is not a good use of our resources.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this?
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, yes.
John Trainor, sixty-two Crescent Street. I'm one of the members of the Town Properties Committee. You've just heard from Ross McPherson, who is also a member, John Wilhelmson, our chair. Nancy Butler also sits on the Town Properties Committee, as well as Colleen Thompson. Many of us have been in town a long time. We've been working on... The Town Properties Committee was formed to take a look at all the buildings and property in town and come up with a plan, one of what maintenance was needed immediately, but also how these buildings should evolve over time. So part of that led us to the fire station. As I've gone around, the one thing I've heard is three hundred thousand dollars is just too much for a study. But this is not just a study. This is to actually get construction drawings, to have needs analysis, to do soil testing, to look... We know we're gonna need a new water system, we know we're gonna need a new septic system. We believe that it's better now to spend the money upfront. We don't necessarily believe we can afford a station next year or the year after. We do know that the debt that we currently have in town will be all paid off except for the police station, and that runs through nineteen forty, I believe. But that tends to go down over time. So in two years, we'll be paying a hundred and fifty-four thousand versus the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand that we're paying this year. And that hundred and fifty will decline over time to somewhere around a hundred and five, a hundred and ten thousand at the end. Now, there will be other things that come along. We have roofs that we know need to be done. So we're not saying that we can just fund this and that'll take care of it. The capital stabilization, for those who may not be aware, is the money that comes from the industrial park. When Cisco went in, it was wisely thought to put, take thirty-five percent of that tax revenue and put it into an account that could only be spent on capital improvements. To spend that money, you first needed the board of selectmen to approve it, it then had to go to the finance committee to approve it, then had to go to capital committee to approve it, and then it has to come here at a town meeting where it needs a two-thirds vote. So it was put in place not to make it easy, but to make sure that the money that was being spent was well thought out.
John, I'm gonna ask you to kind of wrap up your thoughts. If you could, please.
I would say that this is one of those well-thought-out next moves. It will not hit your tax rate. It's three hundred thousand, I agree it's a good amount, but we will know exactly where we stand at the end. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anyone else care to speak to this issue tonight? Yes, Jason. Anyone else who hasn't spoken first before people start speaking second? No? Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Jason Lewis, two sixty-eight Main Street. I agree with what everyone's saying about the blueprints, but I just heard someone say that we might not build the station for two or three years. So we have blueprints in today's age where technology changes by the moment, so those blueprints could be obsolete by that point. I'm just saying, with times, inflation, gas, I just think we should put this on the back burner and think about it.
Okay, thank you.
Because these blueprints, if you wait... I am in the construction business also. I'm not an engineer, but I think I'm pretty smart. So I really think we should put this on hold. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, just a brief counter to the...
Mr. Moderator, through you to respond to the last one. There will be some small elements. Technology does improve, communications equipment improves, but the bones and the structural components that are the majority of the plans would remain viable for a good, long while.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else with something new? If not, I think we've kind of discussed this from left and right. Something new to bring to the table, sir?
Bobby Durbin, one thirteen Prospect Road. Just more of a question. I've been in town a little over twenty years. This is my first time actually coming to a town meeting.
Welcome. So you're next here, too, I hope.
Personally, I think we're about twenty years behind the curve as far as a new fire station. I think it's definitely needed. My question is more, do we have the ability to leverage anything with the town of Carver, with the project they're doing down there, in leveraging a new fire station in regarding any type of mutual aid? Because if they do more building down there, there's a higher chance that they're gonna need mutual aid for us to respond, also including vehicle traffic. So is there any way we can leverage with the town or that project that's doing that to maybe offset some of these costs to relieve our burden a little bit?
All right, thank you. Either the selectman or fire chief want to address what we might get out of Carver based on this, or John?
Mr. Moderator, through you. We can certainly ask. There are no promises. I know Carver did secure a tremendous amount of money from the developer as part of the package. We can ask, but regardless, we're gonna need a plan in place, even if they were to agree to help us fund the fire station.
Yes, Mr. Olmson?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, just to add on to that, you know, one of the processes that we would be looking for to do with any project that we do here is to make sure that we leverage anything and everything that we can to keep costs down, whether that be prior plans, other work that's already been done by architects. And so, you know, in the spirit of looking to leverage things, if we can help, if we have good plans and we can have Carver help pay for some of it, I think we're all in favor of that.
Thank you. All right, last call for anything new. Okay, I think we did a very good job tonight debating this and discussing the points. Yours should all be congratulated. It's time to vote. This is a two-thirds vote for this because the funding sources are from both capital stabilization accounts. All in favor of Article twenty-eight, please raise your right hand. Down hands. All opposed. Two-thirds in here.
Unanimous.
Article passes. Article twenty-nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of ninety-five hundred dollars to cover the purchase and installation, including any equipment and/or services related thereto, of fire and burglar alarm systems at the highway barn, and a fire alarm system at the Plimpton Public Library, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand five hundred for the purchase and installation, including any equipment and/or services related thereto, of information technology equipment, including replacement of a twenty-twelve documents server, and purchase and installation of updated security software, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand five hundred for the purchase and installation, including any equipment and/or services related thereto, of information technology equipment, including replacement of a twenty-twelve documents server, and purchase and installation of updated security software, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand five hundred for the purchase and installation, including any equipment and/or services related thereto of information, technology equipment, including replacement of a two thousand twelve documents server, and purchase and installation of updated security software.
Second?
Motion, Article 30 has been moved and seconded with the funding source, raise and appropriate. Any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 30? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, so the next seven articles have to do with Planning Board, I mean, bylaw reviews, bylaw modifications, suggested zoning bylaws and things like that. Some of them are kind of long, so I'd like to show our hands, all in favor of, if it's a long article, just allowing me to summarize by the first couple of sentences rather than read the whole thing. All in favor? Opposed? You are wise people. Okay, Article 31, it's amend general bylaws, Chapter 1, Article 2, about penalties enforcement by inserting a new clause, and these deal with Board of Health violations. Do I have a motion and a second?
Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Chairman, Bylaw Review Committee. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article 31 is made and seconded, and this requires a report from the Planning Board? No, this one doesn't because it's not a zoning bylaw. Okay, any discussion or explanation?
Someone from Board of Health was going to speak to this?
Okay, then you're next, okay.
Thank you, Alan. Brad Cronin, 176 County Road, Chair of the Board of Health. While not very often, sometimes when we issue orders for compliance with the regulations we enforce, people don't adhere to them. Currently, the only course of hack, action we have is the court system for compliance. Not the personal break, but that gets expensive pretty quick. So this would add another tool in our toolkit to give us the ability to tick it for offenses when people don't adhere to our lawful orders for compliance. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. I was actually originally going to ask if this was something new completely because of the wording, but it seems like it is. So I'll ask, was this, is this in line with what you, what has been seen in other, like the fine amounts? If I could get that information?
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Cronin?
Yes, so the ability to tick it for any regulation is something that is afforded in mass general law if a town adopts it. We have it in our bylaws for other violations. Currently, the Board of Health does not have it. We mirrored, or closely mirrored, what surrounding communities did with the first event, first violation essentially being a warning with no financial penalty to just give another time for compliance and give another ability for somebody to commit to compliance before there was any financial burden put on them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 31? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority.
Unanimous.
Article 32, see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 5, intensity of use regulations, and this deals with retreat lots. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that we amend Article 32 so that it will read, "to delete the first sentence of Section 300-5.8A in its entirety and replace it with," and then the remainder of the section will be the same.
Okay, so do we need to move the original article before amendment? Okay, so the motion is for Article 32, but it's going to read slightly different. It's going to read, "to delete the first sentence of Section 300-5-5.8." Blah, blah, blah. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then the remainder is the same.
The remainder is the same. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and this is a zoning bylaw change, so we need a Planning Board report.
Okay, so the Planning Board met on the 10th of May and voted to recommend approval of this article. If I could give just a brief explanation of what this article does, all of these zoning articles are somewhat administrative. So this particular section of the bylaw deals with retreat lots, and it used different terminology to talk about the strip of land that connects a retreat lot from the road to the bulk of the lot. It called it an accessway, it called it an access area, it called it an accessway as one word or as two words. So all of this particular article is doing is creating a defined term, capital A, access, capital A, area, and spelling out that the portion of the lot from the street to the point where it is 100 feet wide is what is called the access area. It doesn't substantively change the provision, it just makes it clear and eliminates the use of discrepant terminology within the same section.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this? Okay, as it is a zoning bylaw change, we'll need a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the article? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed. Majority.
Unanimous.
Two-thirds majority, I'm sorry, two-thirds.
Unanimous.
I'm sorry, Brian?
We're all good here.
Okay, two-thirds majority, the motion.
Can I just get the signature?
Yeah, right. The article passes. And so what the town clerk's doing, because there was an amendment, Ms. Sobolewski put the amendment in writing, and so the town clerk is just getting that signed by her. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning, Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 7, special permits, uses authorized by special permit by amending it as described in the next almost page. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Ann Sobolewski, Chair of the Planning Board, 255 Main Street. I move the town to vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion for Article 33 has been made and seconded. Planning Board report, please.
At the Planning Board hearing on the 10th of May, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this article to town meeting. Again, this is ministerial. If you recall, I think it was five years ago, the Table of Uses was amended in the zoning bylaw. So we went through the Table of Uses and we changed certain terminology where it was, you know, out of date or where it hadn't actually ever been used in the town. And when we did that, we neglected to go through the special permit section of the zoning bylaw and make corresponding changes where there were appropriate. So this fixes that discrepancy. So if you recall, back five years ago, we changed the words adult entertainment in the Table of Uses to adult uses. We changed the word club for lodge, not-for-profit, and we substituted private club. Previously, there was a provision in the Table of Uses that said a commercial riding stable required a special permit. That is, in fact, illegal under Trends versus Town of Norwell. You can't require a special permit for that. So we corrected it in the Table of Uses, but we never corrected any of those things in the special permit section, and that is what this does. It makes them match so there's not terminology used in this section that isn't used nowhere else in the bylaw.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 33 as printed? Downhands, opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article 34, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 6, Section 300-6.4A pertaining to off-street parking.
Mr. Moderator, Ann Sobolewski, 255 Main Street.
Please step up to the mic a little closer, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Chair of the Planning Board. I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded for the article. Planning Board report.
At our hearing on the 10th of May, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. The change in this section is, is at the end of the paragraph. We've reprinted the entire paragraph, but the real change is at the end. What the paragraph does is, it says, if you are constructing something that requires parking spaces and there's a reason why you don't want to construct all the parking spaces immediately, as long as you have the space available on the property and a plan that shows you could put those parking spaces in later, that could be approved. But what was missing was a trigger as to when those parking spaces, if they were being held in reserve, would need to be constructed. And what this does is, it says, if at any time after the special permit is granted and the building inspector determines that you need those additional spaces, he can require you to install them. So it just takes what was there as a possibility, but creates a trigger as to when someone might need to put them in, which was missing.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 34? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Two-thirds carries in here?
Unanimous.
Article passes. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 6, Section 300-6.7 pertaining to site plans.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article 35 has been motioned, moved and seconded. Report from the Planning Board, please.
At our hearing on the 10th of May, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. This does two things to the existing section. It gives the Planning Board five more days to act on site plans from 60 to 65 days. And then it makes a change that truthfully, I berate myself for not making three years ago. The existing site plan fee provision of the bylaw establishes the amount of money people have to pay as a fee for site plan review based on the square footage of a building. And it set forth no amount if you were putting in a solar farm. So none of the solar farms built any buildings, and they didn't contribute any fees. What this does is it adds a fee requirement of $200 per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area per building, that's what it currently is, or square feet within the boundaries of a ground-mounted photovoltaic project. By adding that in, if anybody comes again to build another solar farm in town, we'll actually get some fees for that, which we didn't get before.
Any comments? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 35? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Article 36, to see if the town will vote to amend the Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 9, 11, Section 300-11.1 pertaining to the following terms, dealing with retail stores and blah, blah, blah.
I know you're excited. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion for Article 36 has been made and seconded. Planning Board report, please.
At our hearing on May 10th, the Planning Board recommended approval of this article to town meeting. There are two components to this. They're both in the definition section, so they were grouped together. The retail store adds a requirement to the existing definition that the sales be to the general public for personal or household consumption. And while you might think that in the, any retail store would be something that is sold to the general public for retail consumption, in fact, we had someone who came to us with a site plan review request for a retail store that was a retail store selling giant cellular node components to Verizon, AT&amp;T, and other telecommunications entities. And their attorney wrote a letter to the board suggesting that because our retail store definition did not specify that the stores were selling things to the public, it would be within the acceptable limits of a retail store. Unfortunately, they abandoned that project, but this will prevent them from coming back in the future, should they desire to, and making that same argument. And then the basement story and story above grade, a couple of years ago, we came to the board with the issue of the houses being built up on bumps and how height was being measured. This is a similar thing. It addresses a situation where, if you've noticed, sometimes people are putting a large mound of dirt directly in front of a property and then leaving sort of like a walkout basement along the remaining three sides. And what they're really doing is creating essentially from three sides of the building a four-story building. We have a three-story building limit in town, but we don't have anything in the bylaw that says if you have a basement that's walkout for most of your, you know, floor plan, it really isn't just a basement, it's a story, and it should count in the three stories. So that's, that's the second set of definitions in here.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All in favor of Article 36 as printed? Raise your right hands, please. Downhands, opposed? Two-thirds in here?
Unanimous.
Motion passes. Article passes. Article 37, see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Plimpton zoning bylaws, Chapter 300, Article 3, Section 300-3.6 pertaining to the zoning map and the Town of Plimpton zoning map by changing the area along Grove Street, currently zoned light manufacturing consisting of 11 residential parcels and railroad tracks along the entire length of Grove Street between Plimpton's east boundary line at the Town of Kingston to its west boundary line, Town of Halifax, to agricultural residential, AR, all as shown on the reference map entitled Town of Plimpton, Mass., dated January 10th, 2022, a copy of which is on file and available for viewing at the town clerk's office or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as shown on the map handout and as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Article 37 has been motioned and seconded. Planning Board report, please.
At our hearing on May 10th, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this article at town meeting. So this is something that most people probably didn't even notice unless you spend a lot of time looking at the zoning bylaw. When the zoning map was first adopted in town many, many years ago, there wasn't a lot of development up along the railroad tracks, and that entire strip of land, which consists solely of residential house lots now with houses on them, was zoned light manufacturing. There is no light manufacturing occurring on any of those lots because they're all residential houses, but unless it's zoned agricultural residential, there's a possibility that somebody could sell a lot and could put in any one of the uses that are allowed in the light manufacturing district into one of those house lots. We had our hearing, we sent certified mail letters to all of the property owners in those, those 11 house lots. People appeared. No property owner spoke against this. They were in favor of it because the possibility that you've bought a residential house and suddenly someone could buy the house next door to you and put in a gas station is something that realistically people aren't in favor of.
Comments or questions? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 37? Please raise your right hand. Downhands, opposed? Two-thirds carries in here?
Unanimous.
Article passes. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $3,500 for bylaw codification or take any other action relative Do I have a motion for Article 38?
Mr. Moderator, right here. Alan Wheelock, 10 Center Street, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. I move that the town vote to appropriate the article as printed in the warrant.
Do we have a funding source for this?
I don't know.
Raise and appropriate.
Just raise and appropriate, I got it. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 38? Please raise your right hand. Downhand and opposed? Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Article 39, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of $14,000 to support a part-time school resource officer for the Silver Lake Middle School or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, Jason.
Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street. I move the motion as printed in the warrant.
Raise and appropriate.
Mr. Moderator, that would also be raise and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. So the source, funding sources, raise and appropriate. Is there a second?
Second.
Article 39's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 39, please raise your right hand. Down hand opposed. That is just a simple majority. Majority in here?
Unanimous.
Article passes. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to establish a stabilization fund for the Town of Plimpton's share of the costs related to capital projects undertaken by the Silver Lake Regional School District or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the motion as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Motion for Article 40 has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, please, Mr. Moderator, Jason Frazier, 66 Maple Street, part of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. For the past six years, with the cooperation of the FinCom and the BOS of all three towns, we have used what's called the excess and deficiency funds to fund our capital plan. Over the past six years, we've brought proposals between $500,000 and $800,000 to both groups and to town meetings for approval in order to maintain the two most valuable pieces of property we own as a town, Silver Lake Middle School and Silver Lake High School and the property that they are on. This has been an extremely successful venture. At one point in time, we thought we were going to have to replace the roofs of both of the buildings. The price we were quoted was $8 million. With the cooperation of the towns and with an extensive envelope study of the problems in the buildings, we've actually repaired the roofs and brought them back under warranty. We unfortunately have depleted our excess and deficiency fund to the point that now we need a new mechanism to continue doing the same work, coming before the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen each year, and then coming before town meetings to ask for these monies for capital projects. So I would ask that you would move this article.
Any discussion or questions? Yes. Elisa, do you want to go first?
I don't.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Lisa Hart, 7 Maria Lane Drive. How would this stabilization fund be funded? Like, where does money going to, how does it go into this account?
So the way that this would be funded is part of our annual budget. We would have a line for the stabilization. We would also continue with the six-year process of bringing forth our capital plan to the Finance Committee and the Boards of Selectmen, and it's an available document, it's a public document. We did hear from some town leaders last year that they wanted a little bit more information when this was not voted for approval last year. Chris Eckland was the Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee for Silver Lake and held many sessions that were attended by Plimpton Board of Selectmen and the Town Properties Committee as well. So we could draw out an understanding of what these dollars would be used for and any safeguards we couldn't place, put in place to make the town more comfortable with this fund.
Does that answer your question, Elisa? John, do you have a question?
Mr. Moderator, John Duffy, 392 Main Street. So looking at the article in closer detail, I noticed that the recommendation of the Finance Committee, does this, is this because the other towns have a say in this, the Halifax and Kingston? I'm just trying to understand why it says two to three and if this actually matters, our vote here.
Okay, so threw me to the Finance Committee. I think he's asking why you didn't recommend this.
The reason it's, sorry, Nathana Sides, Finance Committee Chair, the reason it's listed that way is because that's the convention that has to be used when we're listing votes in the warrant. So the first number that you see is the number of I votes or positive votes to pass the motion. The second number would be the number of negative votes. So in other words, the Finance Committee did not approve this article by a vote of two, four, and three against.
And was there a reason? I mean, what was the rationale?
We're just cranky.
I don't know. Does that answer your question, John? I think that question deserves at least a generic response from the Finance Committee about what the opposition to it might be. Someone would like to speak to that?
I'm generically cranky. We just felt that we would prefer that we would get more information on a per-case basis rather than funding, creating a separate fund that would be funded routinely. And we recognize that they would still have to come to us for approval of any expenditures from that fund. We just didn't see the need to establish the fund. They could still come to us when they have an expenditure that needs our approval.
Thank you, Nate.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
John Mulhollandson, 255 Main Street, Town Properties Chair. Couple things. One, I would note that this merely establishes the fund. There is no funding of this year. Second of all, the way that I look at this is it is another tool, you know, another arrow in the quiver that is available therefore for Silver Lake to manage some of the smaller expenditures that are going to come up on a regular basis, similar to what we've been doing here at Denit with excess funds, such that they don't end up coming and having to sort out at town meeting. I don't think there's any intent, as I understood it from the meetings that I've attended, to use this for really large items. Those would still come to town meeting like we did with the tennis courts last year. So I think this is part of a prudent sort of savings mechanism in order to be able to manage these properties that are large and expensive. Thank you.
Yes. The timer is running.
You try. Carolyn DiChristofano, 198 Main Street. And for those who didn't understand that, I happen to live with the town moderator who does not moderate me. Anyway. So I'm just a little confused about the process by which the funds would be accessed because I've heard two different things, or maybe I just misunderstood. So we put the money in by town meeting vote. How does it get accessed? And are there any limits on, if it's not by town meeting vote to take the money out, are there any limits that we can put on how much could be spent before coming to town meeting?
Okay, Jason?
So what I would say is that this is going to be a similar procedure and methodology that we have been using for the past six years with the cooperation, Finance Committee, Boards of Selectmen, and the town meetings of all three towns. However, excess and deficiency fund is sort of like free cash is for towns, and we've depleted that. So now we have to, in a way, start raising and appropriating year in and year out to fund our capital expenses at the regional school level. So to establish this fund, it has to be done here at town meeting. To fund this, it would come as part of the Silver Lake Regional Schools' annual budget each year, broken out as a line item that we could speak to at town meeting. We could have these discussions. We would obviously bring our capital plan forth to the Finance Committee and Select Board for that year of appropriations. And then there would be controls from those ends. Once those funds were put in, it would take a two-thirds vote of the Regional School Committee to actually then utilize those funds the following year in its budget. And if you don't like what we do, you can vote us out. I'm just saying.
Nobody said anything about that, Jason. Did I just want to question about how this works?
There's safeties. There are safeties built into the process of how we elect our officials who are then charged with disseminating those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have one more, if you don't mind.
Yes, no?
We have a fund, like a special ed fund, this is like a savings account that we've established, usually funded through excess money the school has during the year. Is there a way to have a fund like this where it's not in your budget, but like the end of the year, you know, you put money in it that you can afford? I'm just concerned, I mean, I know Silver Lake budget's great. For us this year, it's really low. I'm concerned about next year when our population goes way up, and now there's a new line item to fund also, us being able to afford it. And I think a savings account, because that's more or less what this is, is a great idea. I'm just a little concerned about the way it's being funded.
Mr. Moderator, 3U, I understand that concern. We're working on that as well. What I will say is you have been funding $5,000 to $800,000 of this for the past six years. Excess and deficiency, once it gets to 5% of our annual budget, comes back to the towns. We got to the point where we were returning monies to the towns through the Pembroke Settlement and some other one-time funds that came into us. Through discussions with the towns, the towns decided instead of getting this piecemeal back and then having to come to annual town meeting to fund these capital projects one at a time, we should then instead use the excess and deficiency funds to make this a more efficient vehicle for dealing with the capital expenses of basically what is another town within our three towns.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? I see no hands. We're going to vote this, and this requires a two-thirds vote because it's creating a stabilization account.
This requires a simple majority.
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you for correcting me on that. I scratched that off. Okay, all in favor of Article 40, please raise your right hand. Down hands opposed. Majority.
Unanimous.
Okay, we're down to the final article. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to adjourn this annual town meeting until 8:00 a.m. on May 21st, 2022, in the Plimpton Town House for the sole purpose of conducting the annual town election, and further that this annual town meeting warrant will be dissolved immediately upon the closing of the polls on that date. The polls will be open at 8:00 a.m. and shall be continuously open for voting until 6:00 p.m. to bring in their ballots for the following town officers. One selectman for three years, one Board of Assessor member for three years, one Board of Health member for three years, two Finance Committee members for three years, two library trustees for three years, one library trustee for two years, one moderator for three years, one planning board member for five years, one planning board member for three years, one Plimpton Regional Committee member for three years, school committee member for three years, one Silver Lake Regional School Committee member for three years. And there's a question on the ballot, question one. Shall the town vote to have its elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk of the town? Yes or no? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 41? Seeing no hands, all in favor of Article 41. All opposed, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all very much tonight. It's wonderful to be a part of this town.